We have a very, very tight agenda today. So we are going to start. Luckily for all of you, we already did the Pledge of Allegiance. So we are going to go right into member introductions of our Palm Beach Legislative Delegation. I am State Senator Tina Polsky. I represent District 30. I represent southern parts of Boca Raton, and I also have Broward County. I'm going to start on my furthest right with Representative Waldron. Everyone, please state your district and geography. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Representative Catherine Waldron. I'm in District 93, which is Wellington, Western Lake Worth, and Green Acres. Thank you for being here.
I'm Representative Rick Roth, District 94, from the Martin County line to Southern Boulevard. I'm west of the Turnpike, all the way out to Arden, continuing out to Belgrade, Pahokee, and South Bay. So I have the largest district in Palm Beach County, District 94. Thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Joe Casello. I represent District 90, which incorporates the great city of Boynton Beach and Delray Beach, down to the Boca line. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Peggy Gossett Seidman, District 91, which is all of Boca Raton, the Barrier Island Highland Beach, and a portion of western Boca area county, where you can see the ocean from the top tiers of FAU's football stadium. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Kelly Skidmore, Representative of District 92, which is unincorporated portions of Boca Raton, Delray Beach, and Boynton Beach.
And welcome to my district. You are here, right in the heart of my district. I am State Senator Gail Harrell, and I represent Martin County, a bit of St. Lucie County. And in Palm Beach County, I have the honor to represent Toquesta, Jupiter, Juneau, Palm Beach Gardens, Royal Palm, Laxahachie Groves, Pahokee, Jupiter Farms, West, and West Lake as well. Thank you.
I am Representative Mike Caruso from District 87, which runs from Manalapan, Hypolex, all the way to Jupiter, and then includes Palm Beach Gardens out to the Turnpike. I'm excited to be here today.
Good afternoon. My name's John Snyder, representing District 86, and I join with Senator Harrell in welcoming you to our home district, cover a good chunk of Martin County up to the north and the northern portion of Palm Beach County, and great to be here.
Hello, everyone. I am State Senator Bobby Powell Jr., representing Senate District 24 in Palm Beach County, starting at PGA Boulevard, south all the way down to Lantana Road. We are encompassed on some parts by Jog Road, other parts by the Turnpike. I'm so excited to be here with you all today. I've got Diane Andre Esquire, who was my aide, and also with us is Malcolm Summons. I will tell you that we are super excited to be here. I used to represent this area before redistricting, so for the last six years, you may remember me. I saw some of my peeps in the audience, if you will, so I'm glad to be back. And remember this: A life of service is indeed a life that counts.
Okay, I'm being admonished to be very quick. So Lori Berman, I wrote Senator from District 26. It's Boynton Beach down to Glades Road, the ocean to Belle Glade, and includes part of Wellington along the way over. So very happy to be here with you. Have two of my staff, Abby Ross and Daniel Dilla Grange, here today. Thank you.
Thank you. I admonished the delegation to be very quick, because we have a very full agenda. So we weren't supposed to introduce our staff, but can all of our staffs please stand up? And can we all thank all of you for the incredible work that you all do? It doesn't get done without them. Thank you all. Okay. So, welcome to our delegation. I would like to thank Dr. Marlene Satello, Executive Director, for the use of this center. And if you would like to give us a few words of welcome, we would love to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I begin a few welcome words, I'd like to introduce you all to Mrs. Liesel Els. She really is the reason why we are able to be here at this center. Liesel, if you could please? Yes. Her and her husband, Ernie Els, started the Els for Autism Foundation in 2009, and they had a vision of having a specialized place for people with autism, so that they would feel safe, honored, and respected, and be able to have the full potential that they have the ability to do. And with specialized spaces, we are able to do so. With one in 44 people being diagnosed with autism in the United States, we all have to go together to ensure that there are specialized spaces, specialized curriculum, and very highly-qualified staff to ensure that they have the maximum ability to show their potential to us. We've created some specialized spaces here that take into account the needs of individuals with autism across the spectrum. Elements such as lighting, color palettes, acoustics, security, and customized learning labs are at the heart of the design of all spaces here at the El Center of Excellence. We have education wings, a beautiful garden that many of you are able to see today, and as most of you saw as you drove in, we have a new building going up, which is going to be a specialized building just for adults on the autism spectrum. It's also going to have a cafe, which will serve as an employment opportunity for adults on the spectrum, as well as a learning lab, so that they can then find jobs in the food industry here in Palm Beach County. We are looking forward to the opportunity to grow our campus with a recreation complex. That recreation complex will be in the back of our 26-acre campus. It will have an aquatic center, an indoor gymnasium, as well as a splash pad, which is very important to Mrs. Els, to make sure that even those who cannot swim can enjoy water in the beautiful South Florida weather. We are very grateful to Senator Harrell and Representative Snyder for coming to the Center of Excellence to visit us, to find out more about what we're trying to accomplish and all that we've tried to do here. We thank you so much for your support. We're not finished. We have a lot more to do. We will also have a medical research building here to help move the needle in the world of autism, ensure that everyone has the same opportunity as those who are here served on our campus. With that in mind, I'd like to invite one of my friends here that has served here on our campus. His name is Jack. He's not here yet. I'll tell you a little bit about Jack really quickly, and he's just going to come and say hello. This is a young man who attended one of the public charter schools that are hosted here on our campus. We host two Palm Beach County Public Charter Schools right here on our campus. He finished his requirements here and then continued to receive services in our recreation activities, as well as in our Adult Day program. And he really epitomizes what it is to enjoy special spaces for people with autism that are purpose-built just for them. And Jack really enjoys sports. We often have debates, because he's a big Dolphins fan, and I'm a big Buffalo Bills fan. So we'll see what happens this Sunday, to see which one of us are going to be able to be celebrating. And Jack also has enjoyed being able to work at the Marriott in Singer Island. We are partners with them, and they've been great in helping us to find jobs for our adults with autism. And with no further ado, here's Jack. So, hey, Jack. How are you?
Good.
Jack, you recently were at Roger Dean Stadium in one of the baseball games, right? What did you do there?
Threw first pitch.
You threw the first pitch? Oh, my goodness. And who helped you practice?
The baseball players.
The baseball players. That's so cool. And how do you like working at the Marriott?
Good. I like to work at the Marriott.
Yes. What part of the Marriott do you work in? Is it the swim?
Swimming pool.
That's right. And did you know that we're going to have a swimming pool right here one day on our campus?
Yep.
What do you think about that?
Yes.
Yes. That's right. And by the way, Jack, I was just wondering, who's going to win the game on Sunday?
The Miami Dolphins.
Well, you want to say thank you to everybody for coming?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you so much for hosting us. What a beautiful, important, enriching school, and we're so happy to be spending the day here and to learn about it. Thank you, Mrs. Els, for making this possible. Thank you, Marlene. Thank you, Jack, for welcoming us. Next, we have a video from Commissioner Maria Marino, who is the County Commissioner for this area. We're going to play the video.
Taylor, do you have the video? She's working on it.
So I guess she's here today, but we are sitting in her district, so she wanted to welcome us. Here we go.
This great center has received money from the legislature, and we hope that you will continue to have the dollars flow into our district. Other dollars have helped the Lagerhead Marine Life Center down the road, and also the Bush Wildlife Center, the historic Limestone Creek area where you are also sitting right now, and other businesses, nonprofits, governmental agencies, municipalities, and of course, Palm Beach County. So when you're thinking of where to spend the dollars, please bring them home to our county. Thanks, and have a great day.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, so a few announcements. Those who wish to speak to the local bills being heard today, or would like to speak during public comments, will need to fill out a green public comment request form, which is outside, and turn it into Janaya, who is sitting in the front row here. If you could raise your hand, thank you very much. Today's hearing is being livestreamed on the Palm Beach Legislative Delegation Facebook page. Replays of today's meeting will be shown on PBC TV, available on Comcast Channel 20, AT&amp;T Channel 99, and streamed 24/7 on the county's website, pbcgov.com. With that, I would ask Executive Director Vicky Noen to call the roll, please.
Here.
Senator Harrell.
Here.
Senator Polsky.
Here.
Senator Powell.
He's here.
He was here.
His phone's here.
Representative Caruso.
Here.
Representative Casello.
Here.
Representative Edmonds. Representative Gossett Seidman.
Here.
Representative Rock.
Here.
Representative Silvers. Representative Skidmore.
Here.
Representative Snyder.
Here.
Representative Waldron.
Here.
Are they listening, buddy? I don't think so. I think so. We have a forum. Madam Chair, we have a forum.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here. We've been here all morning, and so this is important work that we have to do for the rest of the day. Are there any local elected officials in the audience that I do not know, see? Please raise your hand. Don't be shy. Please stand up.
Michael Barnett.
You want to say your name and what you do? Welcome to the County Commission, Michael Barnett. Welcome, Mr. Poole. Okay, thank you. Next.
Wait.
I'm sorry.
Michael Johnson, Indian Trail President, District Board President.
Thank you for being here. Okay, we did that. Okay, so next, we're going to move to our Constitutional Officer presentation. We only have one, and we are lucky to have Allison Novoa, Public Information Officer and Director of Strategic Initiatives for the Supervisor of Elections Office. Welcome, Allison.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. As Senator Polsky said, my name is Allison Novoa, and I am happy to be here. Thank you so much for inviting us today. Unfortunately, Supervisor Link is unable to make it. She is actually out of state at a Florida Supervisors of Elections Executive Committee Conference, so I will be speaking on her behalf. With regard to the legislative priorities for the Florida Supervisors of Elections, a complete list will be provided to you once those priorities have been voted on by the Florida Supervisors of Elections. But today, I can discuss briefly a couple of those items that you will see on their list of priorities that I just wanted to bring to your attention, so that you can keep an eye out for them. First, the mission of our office, the Palm Beach County Supervisor of Elections Office, is to ensure that every eligible Palm Beach County citizen registers to vote, and that every eligible vote is counted accurately and timely. Florida is the number-one gold standard currently when it comes to elections. We are the nationwide model for election administration and for the timely reporting of election results, accurate and timely results. And that is because the current law allows voters three different ways to vote. Current law also dictates the timeline in which our office can prepare those ballots and also process them. So the current law, as it relates to the three different ways to vote, is what allows our office and Florida as a state to be the gold standard. One of the issues of the priorities is related to Section 31 of Senate Bill 524. That section proposes that a voter on a return vote-by-mail ballot provides personal identifiable information, including with their signature on their return vote-by-mail ballots. The Florida State Supervisor of Elections has prepared a workgroup report with regard to Section 31 of Senate Bill 524. It is short, it is succinct, and it explains why the implementation of that section will no longer allow Florida to be the gold standard as related to the timeliness of the results of elections. The implementation of Section 31 will not allow Florida to report results on election night. So I encourage you, when that workgroup report comes across your desk, please take a look at it. It's a logistical and financial essential nightmare for the reporting of those results. Also, you may see some requests for clarification regarding the public inspection process. Palm Beach County specifically has a very robust and transparent process regarding the public inspection process, but the state Supervisors of Elections may ask for some clarifications, since some of the various supervisors went about that process a little bit differently. But most importantly, we are here to be a resource as you consider new legislation. There is a lot of misinformation and misunderstood information about the elections process and everything involved in conducting a safe election and election security. So we would like the opportunity for you to allow us to walk you through the current proposed legislation and what effects, good or bad, that may be, because we are here to support you. And of course, as many of you know, Supervisor Link welcomes your calls anytime, day or night. She is available, so we just ask for that opportunity to explain any questions you may have. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much for joining us. Okay, we are going to start with our presenters. We have 19 scheduled, and I'm sure a lot of additional public comment. Public comment on general presentations, not on the local bills at this time. If you want to speak to the local bills, that will be after we're done with all the presentations. Because we have so many speakers, I'm sorry, I have to limit you each to two minutes. And you may speak, and then members may ask you questions. We'll try to keep that quick as well. And so again, if you want to fill out a public comment outside, and then please give it to Janaya in the front row. I'm going to call a few names at a time. If you could please line up behind the lectern, so we can go one by one by one. So first presenter we have is Dr. Stacy Volnik, Interim President from Florida Atlantic University. Next up, Dr. Deborah Schwinn, President, Palm Beach Atlantic University. Are we good with time? You may begin. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of this delegation. I'll be respectful of your time and keep my comments brief, as you mentioned. I'm Stacy Volnik, Interim President of Florida Atlantic University. I assumed this role on January 1st, following President Kelly's departure. I'm a triple FAU alum, earning my bachelor's, master's, and most recently, my doctoral degree from Florida Atlantic. I also have been administrator for 31 years in higher education, and recently served as the university's Chief Operating Officer and Vice President of Administrative Affairs. Today, Florida Atlantic University is one of the nation's most diverse public universities, with more than 55% of its students coming from historically underrepresented groups. Additionally, more than 40% of our students are low-income and Pell Grant-eligible. Since 2014, FAU has more than doubled its four-year graduation rates and did so with zero equity gaps. I need to repeat that: zero equity gaps. This means that regardless of race, income, or first-generation status, students from all backgrounds achieve at Florida Atlantic University. I am also a first-gen student. As our graduates join a network of nearly 200,000 FAU alum from around the world, I'm incredibly excited to lead this institution as we continue to pursue an ambitious agenda and begin the search for our next president. During the 2023 session, FAU's legislative agenda will center around initiatives in healthcare. As you know, Florida's population is growing, particularly within the five-county area that Florida Atlantic serves. With more than 4 million residents as the 2020 census, the southeast coast of Florida, from Indian River to Broward Counties, is home to nearly one-fifth of the state's population. With this growth comes an increased pressure on the area's healthcare system, as our state faces significant shortages in nursing, physicians, and affiliated healthcare workers. FAU remains committed to addressing these challenges. FAU Health, an initiative, has been bringing premier academic medicine to southeast Florida by facilitating collaboration and innovation among a variety of healthcare specialties and partner organization, which allows the university to enhance and expand its healthcare-related education programs while addressing the critical workforce shortages. Soon, Florida Atlantic will submit a request for operational and PICO funding for its proposed College of Dentistry. With approval, it will become the second public-funded dental college in Florida. As a community-based college, it will be housed in a new state-of-the-art facility on FAU's Boca Raton campus, and will train 90 dentists per year, as it seeks to address the critical shortage of dental professionals throughout Florida. In addition, FAU has submitted requests to increase enrollments in our Charles E. Schmidt College of Medicine and our Christine E. Lynn College of Nursing. We're working to keep Florida at the forefront of higher education in our country, and support from individuals like you is paramount to our success. I appreciate your time. Thank you, and thank you for your service to this great state of Florida. And go Athens.
Welcome. Congratulations on your appointment, Dr. Volnik.
Thank you so much.
I look forward to meeting with you personally, as a few of us represent the Boca area. So congratulations.
Thank you. I look forward to that, too.
Hopefully, we'll see you in Tallahassee.
Absolutely.
Okay, so after Dr. Schwinn, we have Larry Ryan and Rich Bartholomew. Welcome, Dr. Schwinn.
My name's Deborah Schwinn, and I am President at Palm Beach Atlantic University, located in downtown West Palm Beach. PBA is planning a new building within our business school, and a key feature within that building will be a Center for Financial Literacy. 32% of Americans run out of money before payday, and 24% of millennials do not understand basic financial concepts. Addressing such needs, our business professors not only teach people how to make money, they also teach people how to keep money. And to that end, each year, this new center will offer a financial literacy course open to the public. The public will also have access to financial coaching, seminars, workshops, and outside speakers, within walking distance to the vibrant downtown West Palm Beach business community. As context, PBA just welcomed our largest class in the history of our institution to downtown campus, and business majors are the absolute top major in our institution currently. And this provides many outstanding graduates for businesses locally. In the next few weeks, we will undergo the last of a seven-year process, the last site visit for AACSB accreditation, which would put PBA's business school in the top 5% to 6% of business schools globally. This will provide even stronger attraction for this, and will attract more people to our Center for Financial Literacy. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Very nice to see you again, Dr. Schwinn. Okay, next up, Larry Ryan, CEO and President of Childnet Inc. And after Rich Bartholomew, we have Jonathan Ortiz Smickla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A year ago, at FAU, with great trepidation, I told this delegation that we would need an increase statewide of $45 million in child welfare funding to increase case management starting salaries to $45,000. Amazingly, the Florida Legislature increased statewide funding for child welfare by $150 million. It was an amazing, unprecedented gain. Of that, the bulk of that did go elsewhere in the state, to areas that desperately needed it, to areas that were in much more crisis than we were locally. That said, Palm Beach got $2.75 million in new recurring funding. We nearly immediately invested that in increasing those case management salaries, not to $45,000, but to $50,000 a year. Thank you, because it has made a difference. For the first time in three years, our dependency case management workforce in Palm Beach County is fully staffed, and has been for the last month. We are indebted to you, and the children and families are truly indebted. That said, we need more. Our real challenge, some of our colleagues and our partners still have tremendous workforce issues. We can't get background screenings done, because the Department of Children and Families or law enforcement are hurting for staff. We can't get recruitment of foster parents, because our foster home management agencies are understaffed. So we still need more there. The other thing we need is we need to serve the teenagers who are duly dependent and delinquent much better. We need to invest in doing that, and it's more than money. We need to support the providers that do that, because people are hesitant to do that. They are scared about the liabilities, they are scared about being on the front page of the newspaper. We need to support them, develop them. We need to develop innovative programs that are different than what we've done. So I will be coming to you all in the coming session or before, seeking your support on that. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Question? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ryan, and I know you work really hard, but speaking of the front pages, could you comment a little bit about the articles in the Sun Sentinel about foster children being trafficked?
I would absolutely love to, and I was wondering if that would be asked. And it's sort of a sensitive area, and again, one of the reasons that I never commented was because there is a lawsuit, that I have to be very careful to not be addressing anything that might go there. Sun Sentinel missed an incredibly important opportunity to really get into what is a tremendous, tremendous... In the next few weeks, we will undergo the last of a seven-year process, the last site visit for AACSB accreditation, which would put PBA's business school in the top 5% to 6% of business schools globally. This will provide even stronger attraction for this and will attract more people to our Center for Financial Literacy. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Very nice to see you again, Dr. Schwinn. Okay. Next up, Larry Rhine, CEO and president of Childnet, Inc. And after Rich Bartholomew, we have Jonathan Ortiz-Smickla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A year ago, at FAU, with great trepidation, I told this delegation that we would need an increase statewide of $45 million in child welfare funding to increase case management starting salaries to $45,000. Amazingly, the Florida Legislature increased statewide funding for child welfare by $150 million. It was an amazing, unprecedented gain. Of that, the bulk of that did go elsewhere in the state to areas that desperately needed it, to areas that were in much more crisis than we were locally. That said, Palm Beach got $2.75 million in new recurring funding. We nearly immediately invested that in increasing those case management salaries, not to $45,000, but to $50,000 a year. Thank you, because it has made a difference. For the first time in three years, our dependency case management workforce in Palm Beach County is fully staffed and has been for the last month. We are indebted to you, and the children and families are truly indebted. That said, we need more. Our real challenge, some of our colleagues and our partners still have tremendous work for workforce issues. We can't get background screenings done because the Department of Children and Families or law enforcement are hurting for staff. We can't get recruitment of foster parents because our foster home management agencies are understaffed. So we still need more there. The other thing we need is we need to serve the teenagers who are duly dependent and delinquent much better. We need to invest in doing that, and it's more than money. We need to support the providers that do that because people are hesitant to do that. They are scared about the liabilities. They are scared about being on the front page of the newspaper. We need to support them, develop them. We need to develop innovative programs that are different than what we've done. So I will be coming to you all in the coming session or before, seeking your support on that. Thank you very, very much.
Wait. Thank you.
Question? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rhine, and I know you work really hard, but speaking of the front pages, could you comment a little bit about the articles in the Sun Sentinel about foster children being human, being trafficked?
I would absolutely love to, and I was wondering if that would be asked. And it's sort of a sensitive area, and again, one of the reasons that I never commented was because there is a lawsuit that I have to be very careful to not, not be addressing anything that might go there. Sun Sentinel missed an incredibly important opportunity to really get into what is a tremendous, tremendous problem and challenge. If you read those articles, and just to put people's minds at rest, no Palm Beach children and no, no Broward, no South Florida children were really mentioned in that article. The tragedy that was mentioned was a girl from Jacksonville. But the tragedy is that we did, or the providers did everything they could to help that young woman. She was at a safe house in Jacksonville, which is a program created specifically to serve children with that challenge. But her challenges are so significant, and they go so far back. She was taken from her parents, who had severe substance abuse challenges when she was a child, placed with her grandmother. Her grandmother, understandably, for a child that had been through that trauma, couldn't really handle her when she became a teenager. And then she sought some miracle in foster care, and there's no miracles. We need, we need to come up with a way to figure what do we do? And so then she was at this program. You can't keep her there. You can't securely restrain or detain her. And the perpetrator, the, the lowlife, the, the abuser who, who trafficked her, was able to make contact with her because you can't stop that. And then, regrettably, she ended up leaving the program without permission, but there's no way to stop her, and she came to an untimely demise. There was a subsequent article about a young woman who was not in foster care, but almost identical circumstances. Parents substance abusing at an early age, removed from them, placed with a grandmother, went into substance abuse and, and, and mental health problems herself, and fell into prey to that. So it's a very, very complex problem that I think needs, as I was saying, needs novel and different solutions, and we really need to rethink the way we attend to those problems. So thanks for the opportunity, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll see you in Tallahassee.
Thank you.
Rich Bartholomew, League of Women Voters of Palm Beach County.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members, thanks for the opportunity to talk with you again today. Our local league advocacy committee, which I chair, intends to serve a very specific, nonpartisan purpose in 2023. We want to support positive local initiatives at all the levels of government. Examples of this will include the housing policies that are going forward in multiple places that you've been talking about already this morning, things you will be working on in Tallahassee, municipal school efforts to improve operations, and your work to advance local government and community interests. As someone who once held the responsibility for intergovernmental relations in a very similar county, I am an admirer of this system that you use to gather, staff, and pursue the needs of your constituents. Our local league appreciates the hard work that it takes to fashion amendments, gain funding, and make progress on the wide array of topics that you will try to address during the session. As your task goes forward, we'll be available to support you whenever we can, to help inform the public about the good work you're doing on the non-headline grabbing subjects so important to the people you're listening to today. When the final delegation report is issued later this year, we'll organize an event designed to help the public understand what you've been able to do in the very difficult circumstances of this divided time. We know that you're going to work on a bipartisan basis in our interests. We look forward to working with you. If you want to reach us, it's very easy. Thank you very much.
Perfect timing.
Excellent.
Thank you so much. Following will be Teri Ann Paolo. Good afternoon, Jonathan.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak as part of today's agenda. My name is Jonathan Ortiz-Smickla, and the chief advancement officer at Center for Creative Education. We're a nonprofit 501(c)(3) that has served Palm Beach County for nearly 30 years. Today, I am here to request state appropriation funding for a brand-new arts and science center that will serve the community at large with after-school programs, as a host for arts and culture events, as a field trip destination, and as a community hub with available meeting spaces. We have a new campus where we successfully renovated an existing building on the site to house our newest initiative, the Foundation School, which leverages our unique model of teaching and learning through creativity and the arts. We focus on students living in poverty, who are behind academically, and are zoned to attend a school that performs poorly on state standardized testing. This approach will improve education across the state of Florida. This appropriation request is specific to a $4 million in support of the construction of the Arts and Science Center. This is a $7 million project that these appropriations would support. The Arts and Science Center will allow us to continue to provide quality cultural programming with a new performance theater and art gallery. In the past, we've successfully connected with our neighbors at low to no cost for things like multiple performances of Black Wall Street, a one-woman performance about the famed Mexican artist Frida Kahlo. We hosted art exhibition receptions that highlighted Palm Beach County history and partnered with the likes of Spady Museum, the Historical Society, and even with the Smithsonian. After-school programs for elementary, middle, and high school-age students will thrive in the new media arts wing and science wing. Children will have access to a recording studio, art studios, science labs, and robotics. Adults will also have the opportunity to host meetings or conferences in the center, and we've also partnered with De Porus Place to offer classes in basic adult literacy and English for non-native speakers. This Arts and Science Center is a sign that everyone in this room, especially the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation, is committed to ensuring that our community becomes the best version of itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a sponsors already for your appropriation request?
I've had representatives, yes, Representative Edmonds and Senator Powell, and I've had representatives from nearly every office here for a tour in December.
Okay, wonderful. Well, best of luck with that.
Thank you so much.
Okay, after Teri Ann Paolo, we have Gail Lad and then Rena Taylor.
Good afternoon. My name is Teri Ann Paolo, and I'm here on behalf of the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, which comprises of Palm Beach, Martin, St. Lucie, and Indian River Counties. I'm here today to ask for your support on issues and also here to offer our support to you. In your packet, there are several resolutions, one of which is a resolution for the support of statutory changes that will lead to coordinated and strategic investment of state funds for water resources using a structure modeled on the Florida Transportation Commission and Florida's transportation plan. Another resolution that is jointly issued with the South Florida Regional Planning Council is a support for increased flexibility for local governments in addressing affordable housing needs. In addition, I just saw that Victoria passed out our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Plan. It had just undergone a five-year rewrite, so I encourage you to look it over. It lists several objectives and goals for our region for economic prosperity. And in addition, I wanted to make you all aware of the available brownfields funding that the council has. We have a $600,000 grant for brownfields assessment. In addition, we also have $1.7 million to lend through our revolving loan fund for brownfields. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Gail Lad.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Gail Lad from here in Jupiter. I want to thank you all for this opportunity to speak and for your service to all of us. I'm a member of the Sierra Club Lock tahachi group that represents Palm Beach, Martin, St. Lucie, and Okeechobee Counties. There are many issues we're concerned with, but today, I wish to ask for your help in a couple of them. Endangered manatees, Florida's official marine animal, are dying, starving to death, mainly due to lack of sea grass and other aquatic vegetation. The sea grass, which needs sunlight and clean water to survive, is dying, they are dying mainly due to, it is dying, sorry, mainly due to agricultural pollution from farm runoffs into waterways and climate change, warming waters due to, due to our reliance on oil and natural gas production. I ask that you, as a legislative delegation, promote policies and funding that will protect our waterways and encourage more non-fossil fuel energy production. Secondly, I ask that policies and funding be provided to encourage green harvesting of sugarcane in the glades. After hearing on the weather report the other day that smoke was in the air, I noticed grit and black residue on my car, known as black snow. It is dirty and eyesore, but most of all, it's unhealthy. It's dangerous to breathe. Imagine those who have asthma or other breathing conditions who live in the glades. We do not often here in the east have to deal with this issue, but every October, for a few months, those who live there have to secure their windows and restrict their time outside, instead of enjoying the cool winter weather and outside activities. Green harvesting is used by countries such as Brazil and is more profitable in the long run. Big sugar needs to be encouraged to do so, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to take a moment to recognize newly-elected Commissioner Baxter, County Commissioner. Can you stand up?
Somewhere else.
Is she here? Oh, hi, welcome. Welcome. We'll see you at the next meeting. Okay, next up, after Rena Taylor, we have Sharon LaRue, and then Marilyn Ritchie.
Good afternoon. My name is Rena Taylor, and I'm the supervising attorney of the Legal Aid Society of Palm Beach County Public Guardianship Program. We cover the counties of Palm Beach County, Martin County, St. Lucie County, and Okeechobee Counties. I'm here to share with you our 2023 legislative priorities of the Florida Public Guardian Coalition. I provided a handout through mail. Hopefully, you have it. And I'm asking that you please maintain the base recurring general revenue funding that the public guardianship programs, which is funded in the healthcare appropriations budget. We're not asking for an increase. We're just asking the legislature to maintain the same level of funding so that our programs can continue to provide the services and the return on the investment for the communities that we serve and the state of Florida. These funds, it's important to realize that these funds are tied to individuals, and without that funding, these individuals will lose their public guardianship representation, which is the backstop for public guardianship system in Florida. If they would lose their funding, they would lose their guardians. And in the fiscal year of 2018, 2019, Florida's 17 local public guardianship offices produced substantial savings, cost savings to the state, more than three and a half times the amount allocated, or 20, over 29 million for one year. This was determined by Department of Elder Affairs 2019 price-per-ward study. And what we actually do on behalf of our, our, our clients is that we serve the state's most vulnerable individuals. This is a population of individuals who are basically indigent, they're mostly all on Medicaid, they have no family or friends, who are willing or able to provide support for them or to make decisions on their behalf. We have case managers that go and visit them, usually the only visitors they have. They determine what their needs are, and they make sure that their needs are met through healthcare decisions, through appropriate placement in facilities if they need that. They have been adjudicated by the court to be incapacitated and unable to make these decisions on their own. So what we're asking is that you maintain the same base funding. And finally, we're asking that you support legislation this session, which will help improve end-of-life care for the state's wards. And our proposed language accomplishes three main objectives. We're asking that the legislation that's proposed honors a pre-existing order not to resuscitate. If this individual had previously expressed their wishes through a written document, this would ensure that their wishes would be honored in the guardianship.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry?
Ask a question.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the time has.
Oh, okay. So basically, we're just asking that, that if anyone would be willing to set up a meeting one by one to discuss this, that would really be appreciated.
Okay, if you could stay for a moment. Rep. Ednison? Edmonds, I'm sorry.
No problem. Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
How many people did the program impact in 2022?
Our program itself?
The guard, the public guardianship program you're speaking of?
Okay, um, oh, gosh, through the whole state, because there are 17 offices throughout the state of Florida, so.
Give me local numbers or statewide numbers, either or.
Yes, we, on the legislative priorities that, that I provided, has, says that there are approximately 3,000 wards being served statewide, and with an annual return on investment of approximately $23 million.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Representative.
Hi, thank you so much, Madam Chair. Ms. Taylor, I, after the meeting, if you'll get with me or my staff, I'd like to talk with you about the end-of-life care proposals you have. I served for two years on the, on the committee that was set up many years ago, the panel for the study on end-of-life care. So if there's something I can do to be helpful, I, I'd like to talk with you about it.
Really appreciate that. Thank you so much. We'll do that.
Excuse me.
Rep. Caruso.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Taylor, I'm, I'm running a guardianship bill. I might have filed it yesterday, but if you want to get together with my staff and, and with the wording that you, you know, we'd, we'd like to consider that for you.
Perfect. Thank you. We'll do that. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. LaRue. After Marilyn Ritchie, we have Dave Lawrence.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Sharon LaRue, president and CEO of 211 Helpline. First, I want to thank you all for your ongoing support in attempting to address the increased need for mental health services in this community, and special thanks to Senator Harrell for your ongoing advocacy of our services over many years. I'm here today to ask for your support of our $2 million appropriations request, which is needed for a couple of key reasons. One is a dramatic increase that we've seen in the need for our services, as well as the fact that we're in a facility currently, which is in, which is aging and in disrepair. By way of background, we are, as you know, the 24/7 helpline and crisis hotline for this entire region, serving Palm Beach, Martin, St. Lucie, Okeechobee, and Indian River, 24/7. Across the nation, over the past 15 years, we've seen an alarming trend in the increased suicide rate. This helped prompt, in part, the designation of a new shorter, easier-to-remember number, 988. The way that number works nationwide is that calls to that number are routed to the local crisis line to respond to them. Here in this area, our 211 team is that crisis line responder, as we have been all along. We are being told that with this new designation, however, that we should expect significant increases in volume. Since the launch in July, we've already seen calls on that line increase by 70%. Already, our team is responding to over 100,000 requests for help each and every year. Of those requests for help, an average of 10 a day are life-saving, suicide-related calls. So again, with these increases, the expectation is that our call volume overall could triple over the next five years, and in order to respond to that, it will be necessary for us to double our staff. So given that, yes, you can see that the need is great, and that brings us to the $2 million request from the state of Florida. Ah, I timed it for three minutes. I'm so sorry. Okay, we need a new building very badly. Thank you so much. [laughter]
Good ending. Is, is that an appropriation request?
It is. It is an appropriations.
And if you already.
We do. We have it with sponsor Senator Harrell and.
Excellent, okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any questions? Oh, we have a question, Rep. Caruso.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank you, Ms. LaRue, for, for the work that your, your organization does in the mental health arena. It's so tragically needed, and, 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 and you come through shining stars with, just the great work you're doing. And I encourage any member here, and all the new members, to, to get together with you to visit the center, the call center. It's, it's amazing what you've got going on there, and I've heard the calls.
Thank you.
And I, I don't know how your people do what they do, but God bless them.
Thank you so much, Representative Caruso. Sometimes I don't know how they do what they do as well, and I, yes, everyone is invited to see it. It is very meaningful when you hear the calls coming in, and you can listen to people taking them, and also very sad when you see the facility they're working. Okay.
Quick question, Madam Chair.
Hold on, please, Rep. Waldron.
Yeah, I just want to say, as somebody who's, my youngest son actually works for American Psychiatric Association, so he prepped me on the 988 a long time ago.
Right.
And their concern remains, the staffing. And their concern remains, the staffing and the funding for the staffing, because it's very important. And I know that, I think there's an article a month or two ago where they were getting voicemail. I don't think it was here.
No, it's definitely not here, but it's a concern.
When you're having a mental crisis, that's the best thing to happen, so I think we, whatever I can do to help.
Thank you so much for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Marilyn Ritchie? Do you have a question?
It's fine. Hello, good afternoon, and thank you for your service. I don't know how you do it. As a member of the Legal Women Voters Palm Beach County Health Committee and their representative on the Florida Mental Health Advocacy Coalition, I'm the perfect person for after her because I'm here to talk about the new national 988 number. 988 is an important step to helping people living with mental illness and their families. As a parent of a person living with mental illness, I have navigated the mental health system for over 30 years. 988 is groundbreaking. To have a number that those struggling with mental illness can call and receive compassionate care and actual help for their issues is amazing. Finding out that your high-achieving high school college student suddenly has a mental illness is terrifying and filled with grief. At present, our mental health system compounds the terror and grief by not having an easy way for families to get compassionate, competent help. 988 can change this. What should and will happen with your help is that when you die on 988, you'll get an immediate response. You're in crisis. A knowledgeable, compassionate person will take your call. You will get help finding resources to handle your crisis. It means that there are mobile crisis teams available, if that's what you need in your district, to dispatch to you. 988 means that you are not alone trying to figure out a complex mental health system. 988 means that your loved one will get the best of care available. 988 will save heartache and dollars. Please support the Department of Children's and Families' plan to oversee and sustain an effective, compassionate crisis response system that begins with 988's easy access to care. When Floridians call for help because of thoughts of suicide or behavioral health crisis, it's vital they get help immediately. It's also important that the state and local communities assist the lifeline centers to work with their regional managing entities to collaborate with community behavioral health providers, such as the mobile response teams and centralized receiving facilities, to ensure that Florida residents in crisis receive a prompt and an appropriate response. Truly, it's almost unimaginable to me that such a system might happen. I mean, I'm a support group leader.
Thank you.
Oh, we can't let it fail, that's my.
Well, now, we have one question for you, and for my members, if you have questions, please turn your card up so I can tell. Representative Edmonds.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is my first time hearing about 988. Could you just quickly walk me through, I have a mental health issue, I call 988, what is the process to rehabilitation?
Well, what should be happening, and we're not there yet, and we do have some flyers that Marcia's going to be speaking a little bit longer, can give you a 988 too that will help you. You're supposed to get a person who can stay on the line with you two hours if you need it, but you get someone who understands mental health, who can understand the issue. Your child's psychotic, you want to get to them in the hospital, how do you do it? What do you do? And they can even then say, okay, we've got a mobile crisis unit, they're coming to their house. But I would expect them to stay on the phone with me until that happens, and maybe tell me which is a good hospital to go to, where can they take them? And give me that kind of support, so I'm not, right now, people don't know what to do. They end up calling the police. That, I know from experience, did not work out well a lot of times, and it's the only illness. Well, people cannot end up in jail because they're ill. It's really, 988, I think, if it's done right, will prevent this, and I so hope it is.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I will love the schedule of meeting with you afterwards. Thank you.
Did you have a question, Representative?
I did.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry. Can't look at two things at once.
Was it a request for funding, and how is this funded?
You know what, Marcia probably can answer that better.
Okay.
She works, she's actually, has worked as Director of NAMI, and I'm a volunteer.
You did a great job.
But Marcia will be here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Dave Lawrence, followed by Andrea Virgin.
Good afternoon. I'm Dave Lawrence, President and CEO of the Cultural Council for Palm Beach County. I'm joined here today by Council Vice President Jennifer Sullivan and Emmanuel Perry from the Tourist Development Council, as well as a number of cultural organizations that you'll hear from in just a moment. The mission of the council is to support arts and culture in the Palm Beaches, Florida's cultural capital. We do this work by providing support services to cultural organizations and creative professionals, artists, administering public and private grants, enhancing local arts education, and promoting cultural tourism. We also advocate for cultural funding, which is why I'm here today. Every year, cultural organizations from around the state submit grant requests in four categories to the Florida Department of State's Division of Arts and Culture. These requests are vetted through a rigorous process, including live panel reviews. All grants must be matched dollar-for-dollar by the organization, and twice-annual reporting is required. This process happens every year, and every year, funding for the program must be allocated during the legislative session. This year, the Division has recommended funding 774 grants across the state at a total investment of $68 million in the 2324 budget. These line items are considered by the Senate Appropriations Subcommittee on Transportation, Tourism, and Economic Development, on which Senators Polsky and Powell sit, and the House Infrastructure, excuse me, and the House Infrastructure and Tourism Appropriations Subcommittee, on which Representative Silver sits, before going to the full Appropriations Committee. We need your support. Among the total requests, there are 61 grants recommended to nonprofit arts, science, and history organizations in Palm Beach County for a total of $7.3 million, over 10% of the full funding request. The Cultural Council and our Cultural Advocacy Alliance, which is made up of arts leaders from around the county, recommends full funding for all projects. This funding is critical as the arts and cultural sector continue to recover from the pandemic. I urge your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. After Andrea, we have Marcia Martino. This is a perfect segue for Andrea Virgin, who is the President and Chair of the Board of the Center for Arts and Innovation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to all of you here today. My name is Andrea Virgin, President and CEO of the Center for Arts and Innovation, a next-century creative campus, proposed in Boca Raton, whose mission it is to inspire and propel innovators, creatives, students, and audiences toward breakthrough innovation, invention, insight, and experience. Our organization is comprised of 12 board members and an advisory council of over 30 local and regional cultural organizations, major educational institutions, health and wellness partners, hospitality anchors, and major businesses, ensuring that the center, while it will be one of the first of its kind in the U.S., still, and importantly, meets the needs of this community first and foremost. Since the project's inception in 2017, the following has been accomplished in bringing this vision to reality. A 94-year, $1-a-year ground lease and development agreement have been secured with the city of Boca Raton, completing a decades-long promise to city residents. A $30 million in total in cash, pledged commitments, and in-kind contributions have been secured. Of that $30 million, over two years of working capital runway is also in place. A world-class and renowned team of consultants have been engaged. Over a dozen statements of interest have been received for the role of the design architect, including Bajark Ingles, Norman Foster, Hersdog Demuren, and other leading firms from around the world. The center's leadership has continued to expand with the addition of incredibly impressive community leaders from all along the Gold Coast area. A proclamation from Palm Beach County has been issued acknowledging the dedication and anticipated impact of the project on the county. An aggressive schedule is on track to allow for a groundbreaking in 2025, the city's centennial celebration year, and a grand opening is slated for 2028. And importantly, the organization's mission and business model has been recentered from its original intent of simply infilling a 60-mile gap along our area for world-class cultural infrastructure, to now also be equally focused on four critical and distinct pillars, which are innovation, education, creativity, and community, allowing the center to be fundamentally different, yet complementary, to what is here in the region. And I urge your support. Thank you very, very much.
Representative Gossett-Sidman.
Yes, thank you, Senator. I wanted to add that I have been basically going to Meisner with my family for 26 years, and this project was 30 years ago on the books, and it's now coming to fruition, so I encourage everyone to take a look at it. I met with Andrea and Andrea yesterday. It's fabulous, and thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you all, very, very much.
After Marcia, we have Emerson, Sophia, and Lilly.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Marcia Martino. I live in Lake Worth Beach. I'm speaking on behalf of the Florida Mental Health Advocacy Coalition, a statewide, nonpartisan coalition that represents the voices of families and individuals living with mental illness. I'm also with NAMI Palm Beach County, which is a member of the coalition. I'd like to address an important new service that, for the first time, gives people easy access to mental health care and suicide prevention, 988, the new three-digit number for suicide, crisis, and lifeline. Since July 2022, anyone can call, text, or chat 988 in English or Spanish and talk with a live call taker who's trained to help people in the midst of a mental health or substance use crisis. Veterans can also access the Veterans Crisis Line through 988. The 988 Lifeline Centers, combined with mobile response teams and crisis-receiving facilities, gives our communities a safer, less traumatic, and more economical way to access behavioral health care. As a NAMI family member who also works directly with families who have loved ones in crisis, I can tell you that many families, including my own, have lived for years in stressful and challenging situations because of their fear of calling 911 and involving law enforcement. 988 is the answer to our prayers. 85% of 988 callers' issues are resolved on the phone, saving the expense of sending any kind of first responder. An effective 988 system means that law enforcement, emergency rooms, Baker Acts, and homelessness are reduced. It also means less trauma for the individual in crisis and their loved ones. We're thankful to the Florida Legislature for allocating temporary federal resources last year to strengthen the state's 988 Lifeline Centers. We're also grateful to you for approving a record increase for reoccurring funding for behavioral health services in this year's state budget, including the expansion of mobile response teams. My ask of you today is to continue your support to expand our community-based crisis response system. Please support the relocation of Palm Beach County's 2-1-1 service to a safe and functional facility, and please support sustained funding for the 988 system in Florida. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On deck is Rafael Clemente.
I have flyers for 988. Do I, can they be given out?
Ladies, welcome. Please introduce yourselves. Welcome, ladies.
It's a little tall for me. Oh my God, it still is. Sorry, I'm a little short. Okay, that does, okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Today, we wanted to bring to your attention an issue that is oftentimes overlooked. We are going to be talking about menstrual hygiene products and period poverty. Before we start, I wanted to note that we purposely use the term menstruators because cisgender women are not the only people who get periods. This includes transgender and non-binary individuals, and we are against discrimination of any form. My name is Emerson Ferry, and I'm a junior at Suncoast Community High School, alongside Sophia Antony and Lilly Demara. I am thrilled to be here again presenting on this important topic. I am the President of the Coalition Against Period Poverty. CAP was founded in May of 2020 with the purpose of advocating for a statewide policy that would provide dispensers filled with pads and tampons in school restrooms at no cost to students. I currently live in Jupiter, Florida, and am a constituent of Representatives Michael Caruso and Gail Harrell. We would also like to thank Representatives Skidmore, Casello, and Silver's, as well as Senators Polsky and Berman and Harrell for co-sponsoring the Learning with Dignity bill in the past. We really appreciate it. This bill will require that Florida public schools provide cost-free period products in schools. Due to global circumstances, there are many factors that can interfere with our academic success, and having a period is something that is completely out of our control should not be one of them. Having pads and tampons that are easily accessible in our school restrooms will ensure that students who get periods have trouble-free access to these products and are able to continue our academics feeling clean and confident. After spending two, going on three years in CAP, I've been able to see firsthand how our efforts have helped individuals in our community. It is important to acknowledge that there are many who cannot afford to have period products, and it would be extremely negligent for us to ignore the fact that people's financial situations have only gotten worse due to the pandemic. This upcoming session, we expect Senator Book and Representative Skidmore to refile the bill, and we ask that each of you become co-sponsors. We believe that all menstruators deserve access to necessary hygiene products. Thank you so much for your time, and we look forward to connecting with you after the hearing. I am not a Dolphins or Bills fan, but let's go Jets.
Any questions? Oh.
Are you speaking? Yeah. Are you? Do you have a question? Yeah, you have a question?
Oh, okay.
Comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to congratulate you and thank you again for all of your efforts for helping us understand this issue and how it impacts your education and the education of girls and others all throughout the state. I am very much looking forward to working with you and getting this legislation heard and passed in the legislature. But on the other side, I'm also looking forward to working with education foundations across the state to work with their school districts and make sure these products are available in any type of a public-private partnership as well. So thank you again for everything you're doing.
Thank you for having us.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Senator Powell.
I echo this sentiment. So thank you all, especially young ladies coming up here to speak about this very important issue. I know it's difficult to be advocating, especially this young, and this is a very important issue, and we're thankful that you are here today, so we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Hold on, Rep Casello.
Thank you, ladies. Good to see you again. I commend you for your advocacy on this. It's a subject that we really don't talk much about, but it's well-needed. And the three of you, we've seen you other legislative, and I commend Representative Skidmore for taking this on, and I'm going to be proud to co-sponsor it again this year.
Thank you.
Senator Berman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was on a phone call with Emory the other night, and I know you are a high school senior, and I just wondered if all of you are high school seniors, and I do commend you for being at this young age and being such good advocates.
Yes, we're all actually high school juniors at Suncoast, yes.
Wonderful, even more impressive, thank you.
Okay, well done, ladies. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. My name's Lilly Demara. As said, I'm also a junior at Suncoast Community High School. I'm currently a resident of West Palm Beach and a constituent of Senator Powell and Representative Edmonds. I've been an advocacy lead for the Coalition Against Period Poverty for two years. Because of the immense taboo surrounding period poverty, the subject is not something that many people talk about or even know about. According to the research article, "Thinks: State of the Period," 23% of students have struggled to afford period products. Additionally, three in five students say that they rarely or never find free period products in school restrooms. Because of the pandemic, period poverty has increased immensely. 18% of students believe that COVID-19 has made it more difficult for them to do their best schoolwork while on their period. Before COVID-19, menstruators who didn't have access to period products were at a great disadvantage, but as the pandemic went on, these items were and are more scarce than ever. As you can see, the need for menstrual hygiene products is widespread, and it's incredibly important for every one of you to support this cause. All of these statistics are heart-wrenching examples of period poverty, which, once again, is the inadequate access to pads and tampons. When menstruators don't have access to products, they're unavoidably forced to use unsafe alternatives such as cardboard, rags, or even newspaper, which can lead to physical health risks and infections. Nationwide, people who menstruate feel ostracized from basic activities or socializing just because they're not able to get the proper necessities. Taking that into account, what we must do is think globally, act locally, and join the fight against menstrual inequity. Taking that, oh, sorry, at a personal level, please don't be afraid to talk about periods and normalize them in all environments. In schools, homes, workplaces, periods shouldn't be a taboo topic. Educate your kids, your family and friends, your colleagues, to stop associating periods with shame or indignity. Thank you, legislators, for your time and commitment to the community, and thank you for your attention today. We look forward to working with you in the future. Just wanted to let you know that we're signed up as like three separate people, so we're going to be like. They weren't listed as. Okay, yes, I will. Okay, my name is Sophia Antony. I am a junior at Suncoast Community High School, who is a resident of West Palm Beach. I currently serve as an advocacy lead in the Coalition of Period Poverty. I'm a constituent of Senator Powell and Representative Edmonds. To combat period poverty, work has been done on a global, national, and local scale. Scotland was the first country in the world to make period products completely free for
Scotland was the first country in the world to make period products completely free for everyone in need. Supermarkets across the UK are also providing free period products as well. Another great example is New Zealand, which made period products free in public schools nationwide in the year 2021. We must continue to come back the stigma that surrounds periods. In a poll conducted across the United States commissioned by THINKS, an astonishing 58% of women have felt embarrassed about their periods, and 42 have been shamed by someone else about menstruation. There is a direct correlation to students missing school because of their periods. One in three menstruating students in America have missed class due to lack of access to period products. California, Hawaii, Delaware, Maine mandate schools to have free period products in their classrooms in grades six through 12. A nationwide study found that 84% of menstruators aged 13 to 19 have or known someone who has missed school due to lack of access to period products. We are striving to implement this requirement in our Florida schools as well. So far, Florida has already joined 21 other states to end the discriminatory tampon tax. Your attendance today shows that you care about the bright futures of our students in Florida. You can help by co-sponsoring the Learning with Dignity bill, voting yes on the bill if it comes to your committee, while encouraging others to do the same and support local pilot programs or menstrual equity organizations for immediate impact. Please prove that you care about this pressing issue and show us your support for the bill today. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ladies. Well done. After, up on deck is Andrew Cato and then Jason Morales. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Rafael Clemente. I'm the Executive Director of the Downtown Development Authority in West Palm Beach. You've probably heard about West Palm in recent times as being dubbed as the Wall Street of the South, with thousands of new jobs and hundreds of millions of dollars of investment pouring into our city, which is incredible and a great fortune. However, we are confronted by a growing challenge with homelessness and mental health on our streets and in our public spaces. Not surprisingly, we heard from several speakers before me today about the growing mental health crisis, and I'm here to bring this to your attention today, that not only is it playing out in homes, it's playing out in public spaces, because many of the individuals who are struggling with mental health end up homeless on our streets. Men and women are, that are incapable of managing their lives in an effective way, almost invariably wind up on the edge with our affordability crisis for housing right now. It is at an all-time high. I've been the Director of the DDA now for a while now, for over 10 years, and I have not ever seen the issue as troublesome as it is right now. I've spoken with Senators Powell and Berman about this, and I'm here to bring the attention, this issue, to your attention and ask that, as you go back to Tallahassee, policies that support people with mental health challenges, policies that protect affordable housing, policies that enable our criminal justice system and judicial system to manage this problem more effectively are critical. It's a critical thing, and it's not just a human issue. That's the biggest part of it, these folks that are struggling and suffering. It's a quality of life and an economic development issue. Just earlier today, I was in a meeting with our mayor, with a team of investors that have invested about $150 million in downtown, and they are not able to secure tenants in their building because of what they're seeing on our streets. So, thank you for your attention. Thank.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Quick question.
You didn't follow the rules.
Oh, card. Card up. No, no, I was asking. Let me ask you this question, Ms. Clemente. Is it possible, I know we had talked about maybe a work group to put together some type of appropriation requests for a program to help mitigate this, maybe this month, as we're getting ready to go into Tallahassee? Just because, as you and I have had this conversation, and I work downtown in West Palm Beach, and I walk, sometimes I walk to get my lunch, and we are seeing a growing number of, an increased number of people who are homeless on the streets in downtown. Is that something that you think we'll be able to do maybe this month? I know you're working on it, but...
Yes, Senator Powell, yes, we would jump at that opportunity. I think in the immediate term, programs like Community Court and alternatives to routing these individuals through the criminal justice system when they are repeat offenders, and these are low-level crimes primarily, occasionally not low-level. But in my opinion, and speaking with experts, I'm an urban planner, I'm certainly not a social worker or someone who's an expert in the homeless crisis, but permanent supportive housing for people who cannot likely take care of themselves is the real solution to homelessness, and that's a high hurdle to clear, but it is a necessity, and it seems to be that the places that have done this effectively, like Houston, Texas, that is a significant piece of their program. But on the ground now, Community Court, funding for mental health services, as we've heard from others, is critical to addressing this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. On deck is Jason Morales, then Karen Moran.
Good afternoon. It is a great pleasure to speak to you on behalf of art and culture in Palm Beach County and the financial support the state of Florida provides to the many not-for-profits in this area. My name is Andrew Cato, and I'm the Producing Artistic Director and Chief Executive of the Maltz Jupiter Theater, a building I know very well as I've been there for 18 years. I'm Florida-raised, having attended Jupiter High School and Florida State University, and I put myself through college working at the Burt Reynolds Dinner Theater as a waiter. Yes, the very theater I'm running today. The support I received from Mr. Reynolds allowed me to write my first musical in my early twenties there, and after graduating college, I had the privilege of working on Broadway on groundbreaking musicals and Pulitzer Prize-winning plays over a decade. I also was the coordinating producer of the Tony Awards for 13 years. I'm very lucky, because with these opportunities, I've had been, I've been able to fulfill my life passion, but opportunity is not an accident. When communities have access to the arts, lives are transformed. That was certainly the case for me. But when you consider the thousands of lives affected by the art and culture of our area provides with organizations such as the Norton Museum of Art, Drama Works, the Kravitz Center, Palm Beach Opera, Palm Beach Ballet, the Flagler Museum, and so many others, it is hard to dispute that these opportunities enrich all of our lives. Arts funding has been cut in the schools, has become a major part of our organization's missions, providing access and scholarships to our various disciplines. And what is even more thrilling is that outside of our beautiful beaches and occasional rounds of golf, our arts organizations are destinations for people to be entertained, but more importantly, learn more about their history, get in touch with their emotions, heal or learn about an opposing point of view. And in our effort to accomplish that, economic and business activity is generated and tourism thrives. Receiving money from the state of Florida is an investment in the people who live here in Florida, whether it provides an elderly patron an opportunity to donate their time and talent as a volunteer, which gives them purpose, or the eight-year-old Guatemalan boy who joyfully walked past me in the lobby telling me, telling his friend, rather, "Oh, this is what a theater looks like." As you know, all of art and culture has been decimated by COVID, and I'm proud that Florida, in our time of need, showed up for us and fully funded both operations and capital projects to help us stay strong and, in some cases, grow. From your collective, from our collective hearts, we thank you. As we move forward, we must make important decisions about values and ask ourselves, what are the repercussions of not showing up, not only for art and culture, but for each other? Thank you for that extra time.
Thank you. Okay, is Jason Morales here?
Over there. Peggy.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Cato? I'm sorry, I didn't even see your card up.
No worries. Mr. Cato, hello.
Hi.
I actually had the privilege of working with him when he was a student, and I did PR and marketing for Burt Reynolds and his theater, and I want to say that Florida has come a long way from the time that Mr. Reynolds took Smoking the Bandit to Georgia, because Florida would not offer a hospitable opportunity. And so, if anyone can go back and see his play or view, I think we should throw everything we can behind him and the arts in general. I want to say this is a living poster boy for that, poster man, sorry. Thank you.
I also wanted to mention that the Maltz Jupiter Theater has become the largest regional theater in the lower half of the United States, and that's because of your support as well. Thank you.
Mr. Cato?
Mr. Cato.
One more question from Rep. Caruso.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to state that 30, 30-something, 35 years ago, my kids performed in South Pacific at the theater, and I'm glad to hear it's going strong still today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, is there, Jason Morales is not here? Okay, Karen Moran, and then last on this list is Linda Smythe.
Okay. Well, I want to, I want to ask you to support accurate civics textbooks, and this year I'm going to be reviewing some of them. I'm also currently writing the U.S. Constitution for Kids in a curriculum, but I'm here today to, as a partner, my partner, Florida Citizens Alliance, they want to strengthen what took place last year in Tallahassee and to further the ability of the parents to put a child in a place, a school of their choice. And item number one of your paper that I left you is FCLA is asking to expand educational savings accounts that are being proposed by the Governor and Speaker Renner this year. We would like to see it include homeschool families and expand student funding organizations, or FSOs, which include, Florida has two of them, Arizona has 50 of them. Another possible funding source for these is for property owners to be able to designate a student funding organization of their choice, a portion of their property taxes. This money would then make more funds available to 501(c)(3) funding organizations, and then they would be able to send these kids to a school of their choice. In addition to educational savings account, item two is to strengthen Florida obscenity Chapter 847 from harmful materials to minors and to remove loopholes that Florida districts currently exploit. Item number four, there's a big difference between opt-in and opt-out. In opt-out, everyone is included in the class, whereas in opt-in, opt-in, which I'm in favor of, a parent would have to sign a form, and again, this puts the parent in control of what their child, when their child learns about certain sexual material. And so, thank you for your time, and thank you for your hard work.
Excuse me one second, Senator Berman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We just had a meeting with the school board, and they actually gave us a chart, and they said that there are 355 choice career and technical education courses in the Palm Beach County School Board, so I just wanted to make you aware of that. So, there is a lot of choice right now in Palm Beach County.
Oh, yeah, but this is funding for kids to go to, you know, private school or, you know, start new schools or whatever.
Did you have a question? Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Smythe.
Linda Smith, Jupiter, Florida, speaking today on environmental issues. Please enhance the legislative commitment to preservation, but seagrass banking is a bad idea. The science just isn't there. Keep it simple, just protect the existing seagrasses. We need to reduce and eventually stop the burning of sugarcane. This month, I provided you copies of the Palm Beach Post's December 27th article, FSU Study Shows Sugarcane Burning Can Be Deadly. Last month, I gave you the study itself. This is science. You could create Florida incentives and tax exemptions for green harvesting, help farmers to be even better stewards of the land than they already are. Just think about the PR of 100% organic sugar coming from Florida. Green harvesting reduces CO2 emissions, sequesters carbon, and enhances the health of our soils. We need a transition period, perhaps, 10% this year. Start specifically around elementary schools and residents, and then continue 10% every year. We'll get there eventually. Last month, I ran out of time before I could discuss the Broward County's resolution to reduce plastics, plastic waste on county properties. I gave you a printout of that last month. Kind of related, but separate, please support House Bill 91 anti-litter balloon release ban filed by Republican Representative Cheney. Support House Bill 91. And finally, we need to expand our natural areas. Let's spend the 2022, 2023 Land Acquisition Trust Fund. It is predicted to receive 1.2 billion, that's with a B, the current 300 million with an M, is an artifact from 1999 and is not adequate, less than one-third of what the Constitution demands. There's no excuse. Spend the money on acquisition, restoration, improvement, and management of conservation and recreational lands.
Thank you, Linda. Nice to see you again. Okay, so, we are up to the public comment section. It looks as if the bulk of them are for the local bills. Some people's handwriting is a little hard to decipher, so I'm going to call out a few that we think are not for local bills that are general comment. If you are for the local bill, please let me know, and then we'll do it during the local bill. If I don't call your name, but you are for general comment, let us know, and we'll take the form out. The first person I have is Kent Nelson. That's for local bill? Okay, thank you. Mark Hoppen. Yes, please come up. Oh, yes, and sorry, thank you. These are two minutes as well. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Hi, I am Mark Hoppen. I am the CEO for Albert Jewish Family Service. When I am not picking up fallen name cards, I'm also the CEO for an agency that serves from Boynton Beach to Vero Beach. We serve about 12,000 to 13,000 of your voters, your constituents, with a variety of human services around mental health, around older adult care, people with disabilities, and we have a call service as well, a community access lifeline. I want to thank Senator Berman for her support of us for many years now, Representative Caruso, Representative Silvers, who's not here, for supporting our requests in the past. We do have five requests that we've actually put in. What is unique about ours is only one of them is exclusively for our agency. We have partnered with three other Jewish family service agencies on two of our requests around mental health and around older adult care. We're partnering with the ARC here in Palm Beach County around providing mental health services for people with disabilities, and we're actually, and for Mental Health First Aid, which is a program we feel very strongly about, we're partnering with an agency in Pinellas County called Directions for Living. And so, we are looking to, you'll see the numbers, they look a little bigger, but keep in mind, it's not just for our agency, it's for multiple agencies in South Florida or in different parts of the state. I just want to say that we are, I've met with, I've shaken most of your hands, I've met with a few of you in your offices, I've had meals with some of you. You are all wonderful people, regardless of your party affiliation. You all have huge hearts. Commissioner Marino said it as well as I could say it, you know, don't be shy about bringing money home to our counties and to our areas. Know that, including the other human service agencies that spoke here, you know, that is money that you know is going to go to good use, and none of us ask any of them whether they're Republicans or Democrats when they come for services, we just ask how we can help. So, thank you. And Senator Powell, if you would ask me a question about what Mr. Clemente was talking about, I'd like to comment on that.
Senator Powell?
Can I ask him a question about what Mr....
Homelessness.
Yes, with homelessness.
Can you address homelessness, please?
I would. And so, some of the money we're getting, if we get it, if we're fortunate, would be for mental health. You know, there is a human service agency, The Lord's Place, that is all about homelessness. Would love the opportunity to perhaps talk to you and partner with them to be able to see what we can perhaps combine do with some of the other mental health partners in our community to address that issue.
It'd be perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, one second, Mark. Representative Caruso. Casello, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You called worse, right?
My question is very simple. With all these mental health agencies, do you get together, share ideas, resources? Do you work as a team? Or I noticed like there's a lot of independent agencies doing some great work, as yourself, but do you get together and like a little mental health coalition, if you will, and share ideas, make it better?
Yes. So, in some areas, the answer is yes, and are all of us doing it no? I actually made a note to speak to, you know, to track down one of them that was here today to be able to do that. But as an example, Mental Health First Aid, which is an educational outreach program that we do, we actually have a Mental Health First Aid Coalition. It's led by our agency, it involves 20 other agencies and... It involves 20 other agencies in our community. Some of them are mental health providers, some of them are not. But yeah, we need to do more of that, of collaborating. And as I think you might get an indication, I'm looking to try to do that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the question. Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank you and your organization. And I'm honored to carry your appropriation. And thank you for the great work you do in the mental health arena.
Thank you, thank you, Mike. I appreciate your support and all of your support. Thank you.
Join Eddie's one night.
Yeah. And see you all in Tallahassee.
Wait, wait, wait.
I'm sorry, one more.
I did put my sign up.
Of course you did. Rules, Chair.
I just also wanted to say the same thing. And we just, when we had the school board here, they talked about the youth mental health first aid program. And so, a lot of people don't realize that you guys are one of the big advocates and are training the trainers and putting together that program. So thank you for everything you're doing. I've done the program. The people from the school board talked about how great the program is. I encourage everyone to do the program because it's a really great program. And everything, and I know you're doing much more beyond just mental health first aid. And so, we appreciate everything that you guys are doing in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Berman. I know I can't spend much time talking about it, but it is a, mental health first aid is a life-saving program. And any of you, I'm happy to sit with and explain more about how that's the case. But thank you.
Thank you so much. The three remaining public comment forms I have are Michelle Kennedy, Henry Ponciano, and Dwight Mattingly. If there's anyone else whose card is for general comment, please let us know. Otherwise, again, please line up to finish for two minutes each. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Michelle Kennedy. I'm the Circuit Director for the Guardian at Lightem Office. For those that, you that don't know what the Guardian at Lightem Office does, we represent children. We protect and advance the legal rights of children who are of an age or limitation that cannot speak for themselves. The Florida Guardian at Lightem Office considers a child's safety, emotional well-being, and permanent placement in stable nurturing home environment where the child can thrive. We provide zealous advocacy and are one of the only parties that only advocate for the child. We are, we represent here in Palm Beach County 100% of children who are in foster care. We use a multidisciplinary model, and we represent children, and that is recognized as the best practice in the country. The reason why I'm here is only to ask you to please, please let your constituents know that we are in desperate need of volunteers. We do not have enough volunteers for the number of kids we have in care. So we'd ask that you just provide notice to everybody that we really do need volunteers. Thank you.
Michelle, if you had a flyer, like a one-page or like a photo that we could all share on our social media, that was, you know,
Absolutely.
What it is, what's involved, like how much time, then I think that would be easy for each of us to share, and then we'd reach, you know, thousands of people.
You got it, I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you. Representative Casello?
Yes.
Thank you. Just a quick question. You mentioned that you don't have enough providers for the children. What happens in those situations where you have more children than you have providers or homes to put them in?
Well, two different issues. So for our volunteers, they're going out and advocating. They go out and see children in the community, in their foster homes, or in their parents' home if the children have been reunified with the parents. We have staff that goes if we don't have a volunteer that goes. And of course, we never have enough staff. And to, back on Larry Ryan's conversation, the pay issue is a huge issue for us right now because we cannot find attorneys or we cannot find staff to take those kids on to. We're lucky here in Palm Beach County that we have a very good nonprofit that does provide some positions for us that fills that gap at this point.
Okay, so just a follow-up. So is there enough foster homes for these children?
No.
And my question is, when these children, we don't have those homes, where do the children go?
They end up in, they end up in group care. Yeah, so they're in group homes. I mean, the federal government and, you know, our state government has tried desperately to close the group homes that we have and try to get people to foster these children. We do need the support. Our nonprofit did give us support this year. So we did hire four independent living CAMHS, or social workers, to really work on those kids that are the hardest to put into foster homes. So we are, we are trying, and I think that we just need more support from the community on these foster homes. We only have about 250 in Palm Beach County, and there's about 1,400 kids in care. So that kind of tells you the need.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Where do most of your volunteers come from?
Well, we have a lot of older volunteers that are retired. So a lot of, you know, we get a lot of helping professions already, people who are former teachers, people who are former nurses. We have lots of lawyers. We get, we advertise, we get them from Volunteer Florida. They go to our website. If you Google the Guardian at Lightem Office, you'll see where to volunteer at, and that drives a lot of people to our office, but not enough.
By chance, have you tried working with AARP or AmeriCorps or the Retired Teachers Association?
We, if you have a contact, we'll take it. We've had a difficult time being able to like even put in a flyer and say, hey, listen, we do have volunteer, please volunteer for us. We would love it if you could, you could get us a contact. We would definitely use it.
Let's get a meeting. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for what you do. Henry Ponciano and Dwight Mattingly.
Good afternoon. My name is Henry Ponciano. I'm here from the ARC of Palm Beach County. Thank you, Mark, for the shout-out and the collaboration. For those not familiar, the ARC's mission is to change the conversation around disability by defying definitions, inspiring possibilities, and improving the lives of people we serve and their families. We do this through various programs that we have that range from prevention, education, leadership, community inclusion, adult care, adult careers education, and community living services. We're able to do this because of the dedicated staff that we have, specifically our direct support professionals. And I'm just here to thank you for supporting the funding that allows us to retain and recruit these professionals by able to, by the ability to raise their wages. So we look forward to continuing to work with you and to support our most vulnerable population. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And finally, Dwight Mattingly.
Good afternoon, Dwight Mattingly. I represent workers that drive or operate and maintain the public transit buses in Palm Beach County, Martin County, and St. Lucie County. I personally have been a public transit operator in Palm Beach County for 27 years. I've been the business agent president of Amalgamated Transit Union Local 1577 for the past 20 years. And I'm here today to let you know that we have fully collaborated with many of these agencies and to promote a more access to public transit by citizens of those counties. During the past three years, including the pandemic, we continue to provide access to opportunity for essential workers, to hospitals, medical facilities, food workers, and other essential services, frontline heroes. I'm here today to voice concerns for attacks on these workers through taking away public employees' right to dues deductions and other attacks on their rights. Additionally, we are facing an all-time need for workers who meet qualifications for CDL with P endorsement and mechanics the same. We are working with the agencies to provide these workers, but with the new requirements for CDL holders to upgrade and passenger endorsements, we are challenged by the need to obtain qualified workers for these new requirements. Providing public transit has become essential as workers struggle to find adequate transportation to jobs and educational opportunities. The need to expand is hampered by the lack of qualified workers. We do not apologize for stating that good union jobs should not keep workers from applying because these jobs and the ability to become a union employee is infringed upon by legislation being proposed on these public workers. We're requesting that if any legislation comes before you to infringe upon the constitutional rights of these workers, to limit how these workers are represented or how dues are collected for public workers. We ask you to oppose these measures. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I see a hand raised, yes? Not you, sir, behind you.
I'm sorry. I'm not really.
Did you fill out a comment card? Okay, then you may approach. We just thought that most of them. No, they were filled out and given to us. All right, just come forward, please.
This is about the acreage incorporation.
Well, that's a local bill.
That's a local bill.
We're not there yet.
Not yet.
Thank you, okay.
So for a local bill, you have a comment section?
Yes, okay. So because this has gone on quite a while, we're going to take a very informal, a very quick informal recess of five minutes. Every member, please be back here because we need our quorum. And then we're going to start with the local bills.
Yeah.
..................
Senator Berman, here.
Senator Harrell, here.
Senator Powell.
Present.
Chair Polsky.
Here.
Representative Snyder.
Here.
Representative Caruso.
Here.
Representative Edmonds. Representative Edmonds.
Rep. Edmonds.
Calling once, calling twice, we're giving your table away. Representative Casello.
I am here.
Representative Gossett-Sidman.
She's here.
She's with Edmonds.
Representative Skidmore.
Here.
Representative Waldron.
Here.
Representative Roth.
Here.
Representative Gossett-Sidman. Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Excellent, thank you, Vicky. We have five local bills to hear this afternoon. Each member and their staff have received the documents in advance for review. This proposed local bills, these proposed local bills will be presented, discussed, and then will be taken up for a vote. Following the full presentation from each local bill presenter, we will allow for public comment from those who have signed up prior to the hearing, or those in the audience who wish to speak to the bill who have filled out a comment card. You will have two minutes. According to our rules, local bills are passed with a majority vote of the House members present and a majority vote of the Senate members present. Let me just tell you the order of the bills that we will be doing. First is Boca Raton Airport Authority, second is Jupiter Inlet District, third is Wellington Acme Improvement District, fourth is a change, it's Village of Loxahatchie, and fifth will be Indian Trails Improvement District. With that, I would like to start with Bill Number One, Boca Raton Airport Authority by Representative Gossett-Sidman. Introducing the bill will be Chris Lyon, Louis Longman, and Walker Lyon. Sorry. Long day. Welcome.
I've been called much worse in my day.
Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the delegation. My name is Chris Lyon. I do represent the Boca Raton Airport Authority. I am with the law firm of Louis Longman and Walker. We serve as the authority's general counsel as well as legislative counsel. I just want to take a quick moment and introduce a couple of folks that are with me today. My board chairman, Jim Knoll, is here. The airport's deputy director, Scott Kohut, is here, and then my law partner, Bob Diffenderfer, is here. So, sorry, that's loud, isn't it? Briefly about the airport authority, they were created in 1983 to operate, maintain, and develop the Boca Raton Airport. They are an independent special district in the state of Florida. They have a seven-member Board of Commissioners, that, five of which are appointed by the county, two of which are appointed by the, excuse me, I have that backwards. Five of which are appointed by the city of Boca Raton, two of which are appointed by Palm Beach County. What brought us here today, those of you that were in the legislature last year will certainly remember this, and those of you that weren't will have absolutely read about it or heard about it in the media. In April of this past year, you all went into special session and passed a bill relating to independent special districts that dissolved any independent special district created prior to 1968 that hadn't been otherwise reestablished by the legislature. There were six districts affected by that. Our district was not one of them, but we were created in 1983, as I said, so 40 years ago. So, we're kind of, we were pushing up on that 19, you know, within 10 or 12 years of what the legislature had addressed. So, we decided it was time for us to take a long look at our special act, our charter that governs our operations, to see, we have not made any substantive changes to it since 1983, so, what is that, 40 years? We decided to take a long, hard look at the charter. Staff got with my law partners, and they went through line by line through the special act, made some suggested changes, which the board approved, and that's what we bring forth today, is a modernized version of the authority's special act. I won't belabor all the different points in it. You do have a summary fact sheet in your packet. The one thing I will say is, yesterday, we submitted an amended bill to Ms. Nolan, the delegation secretary, which I believe has probably been distributed to the entire delegation. That, there's really only one change in that version versus what was submitted on December 20th, on the deadline. And as, that was as a result of some conversations we had with the city of Boca Raton, and we came to an agreement, a compromise, and that is what is contained in that document in the version that was submitted yesterday. So, that is the bill. I would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate working with the city of Boca to get to the compromise. Are there any questions? Oh, I see there are questions. So, let me start this way with Representative Edmonds. No, Representative Caruso.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What was the compromise with the city of Boca Raton?
The specific one that was reflected in the amendment yesterday related, relates to the voting threshold necessary to hire or fire the airport's executive director. The current, in the current charter, it takes a three-quarters vote of the board against seven-member board. The city proposed moving that down to two-thirds. The compromise that we proposed and we agreed upon was two-thirds with one of the majority votes being a county appointee.
Thank you.
Representative Edmonds.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is it normal for board members to be compensated, and how many hours do they work, yearly or weekly, monthly?
Yes, Madam Chair. I've represented special districts in my 20 years of doing this, and it's absolutely normal for board members to be compensated. They meet monthly as it is. Their current compensation that was established again back in 1983 is $100 per meeting. We have proposed to increase that to $250 a meeting with an annual cap of $3,000. That's actually less than... Sorry, the $250 is actually less than the $100 in 1983 if you adjust it for inflation. With inflation, it would be around $320, I believe.
And I'm sure they're underpaid and overworked. How many members are on that board?
Seven members on the board, five appointed by the city, two appointed by the...
I heard you say that, thank you.
Representative Casello.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just great. Could I compare this with what we've done to Disney World as far as dismantling the special districting? Would that be a fair comparison?
Don't make me step into that. No, sir. This is something we're voluntarily doing. Again, we, because of the action the legislature took against some older districts that had never come back to the legislature to be reexamined, if you will, again, that deadline was 1968. We were established in 1983, so that's only, what, 15 years apart? That just caused us to say, hey, why don't we go back and look through our charter and see what's outdated, what should we change? And so, that's when staff got, again, with our, my partners, and we went through line by line and proposed these various changes, simply, purely to modernize. No, this is our, we are bringing this solely on our own behalf.
And if I could do a follow-up. What about, and I know one of the questions up there with Disney was the taxation of this, how is this going to work at the airport? Are you going to pick up those expenses, or does that be passed on to the city?
The, I'm not sure how to answer that. The airport doesn't actually levy a tax. Its revenues are based primarily from the tenants that lease property on the airport grounds. We're not dissolving the district. The district continues on, so there's no shifting of assets or liabilities or anything like that. We're just, we plan to continue business, continue operations, just modernizing our operations that haven't been done in 40 years.
Thank you.
Sure.
Representative Gossett-Sidman.
Yes, thank you, Senator. I was, I'm very honored to sponsor this bill. I've met with the gentleman in Tallahassee and here in Boca Raton. The airport does serve a very vital niche. It is actually established at Customs and Border Patrol, a location, the only one between Fort Lauderdale and Palm Beach. It serves many, many small aircraft, island hopping. Actually, I was amazed at how many tails actually started with C, which is Canadian airliners, you know, the small craft. It's just a terrific airport, and I applaud these gentlemen and the authority for being proactive in reviewing before there were problems that might occur in the future. And it was a good compromise with the county and the city speaking back and forth, and I felt that everyone was fairly satisfied with the terms as you see here. And so, thank you.
Thank you. I will count that as your debate. Well done. Question, Representative Waldron.
Just a couple of questions. One is, down here you say it enables the authority to enter into public-private partnerships outside the airport boundaries. Just curious, are there any specific partnerships you're looking at, or...
I would probably have to use one of my lifelines for that, to ask one of them. Scott, do you want to come up and perhaps address some of those? Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly. Scott Kohut, Deputy Director for the Boca Raton Airport Authority. Some of the things that we are looking at with the public-private partnerships is, you know, different opportunities to pair with schools for charter educations. We're working with West Boca High to establish an aviation academy. We've also met with several advanced air mobility companies that are looking to bring that technology into the area, several drone manufacturers that are looking to do a drone facility in Boca Raton. Now, at the end of the day, most of our tenant airport relationships are kind of a P3.
Great, that's, thank you, that answers a question. That's great. And just another, one last question was with regard to, I'm coming from the port of Palm Beach where we're a special district, and we, you know, we don't tax, but we could tax. We haven't taxed since 1975. I mean, you said you don't tax, but is there the ability for you to tax?
Right. They do not have the ability, excuse me, they do not have the ability to tax in their charter.
Okay. Thank you very much. It's a good bill. Thanks.
No other questions? Okay. Since we have finished questions, is that correct? We finished questions? Is there any public comment on this bill? None that have been received, none in the audience? Okay. Who would like to make a motion to approve this local bill? Rep. Casello, is there a second? Rep. Skidmore. It is moved... Okay. It is moved and seconded that the delegation approved this local bill. Is there a member debate? Okay? No? Thank you. Having no additional public comment or debate, the question is on adoption of the motion. The executive director will call the roll.
Senator Berman.
Yes.
Senator Harrell.
Yes.
Senator Polsky.
Yes.
Senator Powell.
Yes.
Representative Caruso.
Yes.
Representative Casello.
Yes.
Representative Edmonds.
Yes.
Representative Sidman.
Yes.
Representative Roth.
Yes.
Representative Skidmore.
Yes.
Representative Snyder.
Yes.
Representative Waldron.
Yes.
Madam Chair, by unanimous vote with the members present, Senate and House, the local bill has passed.
Thank you. Having received votes in favor by a majority of the House members present and a majority of the Senate members present, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the delegation.
Next up is Jupiter Inlet District. By, by Representative Snyder, thank you. But we are going to hear a presentation from Richard Pinsky from Acreman. Please begin, Mr. Pinsky.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. Members, Happy New Year. Congratulations to our new delegation members. Congratulations to the returning members. Thank you for the opportunity. The Jupiter Inlet District, just as an overview, is managed by five elected commissioners, two of which are here today. We have our chair, George Gentile, who is Bobby Powell's biggest fan, and he was re-elected as chair last night, and also Commissioner Whipple, and then our executive director, Joe Chason. The, very similar to the Boca Raton bill, airport bill in some ways, we are 100 years old, and our codification took place by the deadline pursuant to Chapter 189 by the year 2000. So, we have done that. Nothing has been changed at that time. There was, the only thing that was done was the codification and a salary commission increase at that time. Prior to that, over the decades, the six or seven times it changed, they were just adding paragraphs along the way. So, the first thing that the Jupiter Inlet District Commissioners did here recently was they went through a very comprehensive review. In so doing, the first thing that they did was they restructured their charter. So, you'll see in the bill all the underlining, and that just simply means that it's being re-codified again, and that is to set it up as articles and sections by subject area so everyone who reads the charter does not have to read the entire charter to understand all the elements of the governance. Interesting factoid, Jupiter Inlet is not a federally maintained inlet. That means all the navigation, the safety, the channels, the markers, everything that you see in the waterways on the map in front of you, I don't know if you can see it, but it's the Jupiter Inlet, Loxahatchie, mouth of the Loxahatchie, Loxahatchie River, and a little bit to the tributaries around it. That is a big job, to maintain more than 150,000 trips that go through that inlet every year, not just residential and recreational, but also commercial-owned vessels. The other thing that you'll see on lines 64 through 72, the purpose more accurately now reflects exactly everything they do. It used to be a two- or three-sentence purpose, now accurately reflects everything the Jupiter Inlet District does. Also, because they do have taxing authority to answer Representative Waldron's question before she asks it of me, they do have taxing authority. It's an independent special taxing district that caps at three mils. That, to the Commissioners, felt was extraordinary. They would never need three mils, so they actually are reducing the cap of their mileage from three down to 1.5. There does, delete some other, some unnecessary language, surty bonding, which isn't used anymore. That is a throwback to decades ago. There is, to Representative Edmond's point, there is a modest cost of living increase for the work that they do. They spend approximately 40 hours a month. All the dock permits, even though they don't have regulatory authority over it, but all the dock permits and all those waterways that DEP is entertaining, get reviewed by the commission as well, in addition to all the time that they spend in on the engineering and other issues that go on. And even though they do an audit, it was never in their charter. So, right now, this also codifies and makes sure that there is mandated an annual audit for the district. And that, Madam Chair, is, in essence, the summary of the bill.
Thank you so much. Members, do you have any questions for the presenter? Representative Roth.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Pinsky. I do have just one simple question. As a boat owner and scuba diver and all that good stuff, you said that they have the ability or right to review dock permits, or, could you explain that a little more, please?
Sure. Madam Chair. The permits that DEP, the 404 permits, whatever they may be, they are sent, they are noticed to the commission. The commission reviews them, not that they can oppose them, not that they can, but they do get to offer comment and point things out that may impact or impair their ability for their purpose and charter, which is to maintain navigation and safety. So, it's only a comment courtesy that is done. But now that you've brought it up, Representative, should the opportunity in Tallahassee occur? That would be a great addition to a DEP permitting bill.
Follow-up? So, thank you, Chair. So, the point is that they have the ability to kind of advise DEP?
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? We have one public comment, George Gentile, you have...
Oh, yeah, if you can allow him just to...
What's that?
Can you allow George to speak?
Yes, yes, two minutes. Or less.
I took the thing right off. I won't take two minutes, but Representatives and Senators, thank you so much for working with us, hopefully, on this bill. We are a major impact to the river and the environment. You can see that we've done a tremendous amount of work in environmental remediation in that area. We are the oldest governing body in the north end of Palm Beach County since 1921, and I'm here to answer any of your questions. So, thank you, thank you very much, Madam Chair and delegation.
Okay. Having finished public comment and questions, who would like to make a motion to approve this local bill?
I'll make a motion.
I'll move.
Okay. Representative Waldron, is there a second?
Second.
Vice Chair Harrell. It is moved and seconded that the delegation approved this local bill. Is there a member debate? No debate. On the page. Having no additional public comment or debate, the question is on adoption of the motion. The executive director will call the roll.
Senator Berman.
Yes.
Senator Harrell.
Yes.
Senator Polsky.
Yes.
Senator Powell.
Yes.
Representative Caruso.
Yes.
Representative Casello.
Yes.
Representative Casello.
Yes.
Representative Edmonds.
Yes.
Representative Gossett-Seidman.
Yes.
Representative Roth.
Yes.
Representative Skidmore.
Yes.
Representative Snyder.
Yes.
Representative Waldron.
Yes.
Madam Chair, by the unanimous vote of the House and Senate members present, the bill has passed.
Thank you, Vicki. Having received votes in favor by a majority of the House members present and a majority of the Senate members present, the motion is approved.
Madam Chair and delegation members, thank you, thank you so much.
Wellington is home to environmental preserve areas that provide natural.
What's that?
This is a video? Oh, got it, okay. Thank you.
Not yet, Taylor. Not yet, just one minute.
Hang on one second.
I may have missed it.
I could just follow the formula. I know, but I need the...
It's Village of Wellington Acme Improvement District, Representative Waldron.
Okay.
Lori Cohen, Village Attorney.
Okay, so for the Wellington Acme Improvement District, presented by, or sponsored by Representative Catherine Waldron, we have Lori Cohen from the Village of Wellington. Welcome, Lori.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the delegation. We do have a video, which I think will give you a good overview of what this bill is really seeking.
Please. Thank you.
Wellington is home to environmental preserve areas that provide natural recreation and learning opportunities for our community. The Wellington Environmental Preserve at the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Everglades Habitat is a prime example. This 365-acre rainwater storage area features nature trails, boardwalks, equestrian trails, a six-story observation tower, restrooms, a large trellis, and seven learning areas. It currently filters 9,230 acres of stormwater runoff or rainwater. This provides an additional 274 million gallons of offline storage and complies with the 1994 Everglades Forever Act. Since its opening in 2010, it has welcomed thousands of visitors and provided a unique opportunity to experience and appreciate the natural beauty of our area. Now Wellington is working to expand the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Everglades Habitat by including the missing link outlined in red. Squaring off the property will provide additional water quality improvements as well as flood protection. This 45-acre property, known as the Moncada Property, was part of a family trust offered for the purposes of restoring the land to its historical use as a wetland. This expands the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Everglades Habitat to 410 total acres and allows this land to be used for the purposes of improving water quality and quantity, providing an estimated additional 30 million gallons of offline storage. Maintaining and preserving our natural areas is critical for our community as they provide important ecological and recreational benefits. That's why the Acme Improvement District is requesting a local bill from the Florida Legislature to transfer the Wellington Environmental Preserve at the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Everglades Habitat and the adjacent Moncada Property from the jurisdictional boundaries of Pine Tree Water Control District to Acme. Acme is a dependent special district originally created by the Florida Legislature in 1953 to provide drainage, water management, and infrastructure development in western Palm Beach County. Currently, the Wellington Environmental Preserve and the adjacent Moncada Property are under the jurisdiction of Pine Tree Improvement District. Despite being under the jurisdiction of Pine Tree, neither the Preserve nor the Moncada Property drain into Pine Tree and receive no benefits from it. Acme, on the other hand, is well-equipped to provide the necessary maintenance and management for these properties. Having the Wellington Environmental Preserve and the Moncada Property under the jurisdiction of Acme would provide several advantages. Acme is able to provide the necessary management for these properties, ensuring that they are well-cared-for and preserved for the benefit of the community. In addition, Acme is able to take a more holistic approach to the management of these properties, considering their relationship to the surrounding areas and how they fit into the overall goals of the community. The Village of Wellington has recently been awarded a grant from Florida Communities Trust to construct hiking trails, equestrian trails, a wildlife observation area, picnic structures, and an educational kiosk on the property in order to protect its natural characteristics and preserve its habitat for numerous listed species. We urge the Florida Legislature to consider this request and support the incorporation of the Wellington Environmental Preserve and Moncada Property into the jurisdictional boundaries of Acme. This will allow Acme to provide the necessary upkeep and oversight and ensure that they are well-cared-for and preserved for generations to come.
Chair, I hope that gave you a good overview of what this is about. We are seeking a local bill to transfer the Preserve and the Moncada Property from the jurisdictional boundaries of the Pine Tree Water Control District into the Acme Improvement District. Wellington owns both of those properties. The environmental preserve is, as you saw, a 365-acre environmental ecosystem that provides flood protection and recreational opportunities for all of the residents of Palm Beach County. And it's a wonderful resource that provides nature trails, a boardwalk, learning centers, equestrian trails, a wildlife observation tower. And it is, the Moncada Property, which was that missing link, is surrounded by the Preserve on three sides. Wellington has committed to make significant improvements to the property, including landscaping, planting, construction of hiking trails, equestrian trails, additional wildlife observation areas, picnic structures, an educational kiosk. And it is important in order for Acme to continue to provide the level of service for those properties to actually come within the jurisdictional boundaries of Acme. So as you heard on the video, and I won't belabor the point, Pine Tree does not provide any services or any benefit to those properties. Those properties, in 2009, after Wellington acquired them from the, or after Wellington acquired Section 24 of the Environmental Preserve from the South Florida Water Management District, the entire area was replumbed in order to pump the water from Basin B in Wellington north to the C-51 Canal. And so nothing in those properties drains into Pine Tree's system. And therefore, Pine Tree provides no benefits to those properties. As such, according to Chapter 298, because there are no benefits provided, they have no ability to assess Wellington for those properties, and therefore, there will not be a negative impact to Pine Tree by transferring those properties into Acme. So we are asking that you support the bill. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Are there any questions? Senator Powell? No? Senator Roth? Excuse me, Representative Roth?
I like that promotion, Chair, thank you. I just have one simple question. Is there anybody, is there anybody that you know of, Pine Tree, or anybody that's in opposition to this?
We're not aware of any opposition. I haven't gotten any emails for my bill.
Any, do you have a question, Representatives? Gossett-Seidman?
Yes, thank you. You made the statement Wellington is looking to improve the land. I just wondered what form is it in now? Is it natural scrub land, natural wetland, or was it used for something in the past years?
Well, the existing preserve is very well-developed with boardwalks and an observation tower and learning kiosks and picnic tables. It's really a beautiful asset for the residents of Palm Beach County. And so that missing piece that you saw, the Moncada Property, will be incorporated into the Preserve, and we have gotten a grant to be able to assist in funding that project. So it will expand the Preserve for the benefit of all of the residents of the county. If you have not been out there to see it, I really recommend that you go and visit it. It is a wonderful resource. And we would like to especially thank Representative Waldron for sponsoring this bill, and we ask for your support.
Representative Waldron with a question?
Real quick, I just wanted, I got a tour yesterday, or two days ago. It's a really beautiful facility. It's amazing. And I also wanted to recognize a couple other people here from Wellington, our city manager, Jim Barnes, and the Assistant Village Attorney, Rachel Roche, for basically helping with this. So thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Representative Waldron, is this your first local bill?
Yes.
Uh-oh. There's trouble now.
Wait, 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 wait. Arrogance.
Representative Skidmore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can we, visitors expect to see wily coyote when they visit?
No, but you can see lots of alligators and birds. And the tower is used by the firefighters who go up and down carrying, well, not real dead bodies, but, you know, you know, heavy things going up and down the six floors to practice. In fact, I saw a couple going out when I was leaving, but it's very pretty.
For those in the audience, there's a little hazing that goes on sometimes with someone's first bill. Okay, having received no public comment, who would like to make a motion to approve this?
Second.
Representative Snyder on the first, and Representative Caruso as a second. It is moved and seconded that this delegation approved this local bill. Is there member debate? No. Having seen no debate or public comment, the executive director will call the roll.
Senator Berman.
Yes.
Senator Harrell.
Yes.
Senator Polsky.
Yes.
Senator Powell.
Yes.
Representative Caruso.
Yes.
Representative Casello.
Yes.
Representative Edmonds.
Yes.
Representative Gossett-Seidman.
Yes.
Representative Roth.
Yes.
Representative Skidmore.
Yes.
Representative Snyder.
Yes.
Representative Waldron.
Yes, and thank you, everybody, for making my first bill so easy.
It hasn't passed Tallahassee yet.
Madam Chair, by unanimous vote of the members, the House and Senate members present, this bill has passed.
Madam Chair, as a member of the prevailing side, I'd like to.
Oh, stop. Thank you so much.
We thank you so much for your time and also for your service.
You're welcome. Having, I guess I need to say this, having received votes in favor by a majority of the House members present and a majority of the Senate members present, the motion is approved. Okay, folks, big show. Oh, we only have 10 minutes, just FYI.
I really could extend now.
Okay.
Madam Chair, could I make a motion to extend the time?
Yes, you may make some motion.
I make a motion to extend the time.
Okay, give me a second. Do we need a second or anything?
Yes, we need a second.
Who would like to second that motion?
We need a seconded time.
Half an hour.
Whoa. Let's try 15 minutes.
Let's try 15.
No, I think it's easier to have an end time at 4:30. I would like to...
If we don't use it, we don't use it.
Yes. But is that, that makes it a little easier than timing it. End time at 4:30?
Second.
Second? Casello seconds that. Okay. So we are going to 4:30. I still ask everyone to be as... What's that?
No, I'm saying, we can end earlier if y'all...
We can end earlier.
Be brief, brother.
If you are repeating what someone else says, you can just go in your seat and say wave in support, wave in opposition, because there's really no point in repeating the exact same information. It's not going to affect our vote if that is what you are trying to accomplish. Once we hear it, we hear it, I promise you. Okay, so, we have, as I mentioned before, a change. We are starting with the Village of Loxahatchee bill, which was Bill number five as opposed to four. So this is the one called Village of Loxahatchee, as opposed to Indian Trails Improvement District, both by Representative Rick Roth. Are you presenting on the bill, sir? Okay, we are going to, Representative Roth, to present the bill.
So just for clarification, after I present the bill, then we're going to public comments?
Before? Questions and then comments.
Okay, great. Questions and then comments, great. Okay. Thank you, members. There's a little bit of history. This is a bill that I've run now for three years. This purpose of this bill is to provide an opportunity. It's an opportunity to create and establish the Village of Loxahatchee by the referendum process, allowing residents living within the boundaries of Indian Trails Improvement District to decide for themselves by their vote, yes or no, to create a new municipality for 43,000 people living on 70,000-plus acres. While the provisions in this charter are limited, this charter does state, in part, certain things that I would like to read into the record. The Loxahatchee area in Palm Beach County, by the way, this is in the charter of the bill. The Loxahatchee area in Palm Beach County includes a compact and contiguous rural community with a population of approximately 43,000 people who are experiencing certain impacts and threats to the agricultural character and lifestyle, as well as plant and tree nurseries face impacts and threats to their agricultural business in the Loxahatchee community from urbanization in the surrounding area. Additionally, it is intended that this charter and the incorporation of the Loxahatchee area shall serve to preserve and protect the equestrian and agricultural character, natural resources, and quality of life of the community. In furtherance of this intent, the rights of the village residents on property zone agriculture or agriculture residential as defined by the Palm Beach County Comprehensive Plan on the date of incorporation to utilize said lands for agricultural uses and shall not be infringed upon by the village. So, we are here today, I know I have a lot of people in the audience that are in support of this bill. I think it's important to understand for everybody that there's been a lot of activity in the area in the last few years that I think is changing the discussion in the community. I know there's a lot of people online, a lot of people, emails, a lot of people, questions. We've had, I've been to many, many meetings, and I think it's important for people on the, that get to vote on this bill, for my fellow members, to understand that this area really is in a state of flux. So much so, I hope I can bend the rules and put on my hat. Don't New York my California. I mean, sorry, don't New York my Florida.
Oh, my God.
Don't New York my Florida.
You just left the punchline.
The point being is a lot of people are moving into unincorporated Loxahatchee, and the area is changing. And so I think this is an excellent bill, and I'm asking for the members' support. I'm looking forward to public comments.
As a native New Yorker, I take offense, just to let you know. Thank you. And Florida would not have a population without New York, just FYI. Okay. We are going to, oh, questions by the members. None. Okay. We're going to start with public comment of people who requested ahead of time. First up, Kristy Peterson, followed by Linda Walker, and we are now limiting it to one minute, please. As you can see, we already have extended the time, and we are not done. Please state your name.
My name is Kristy Peterson. I'm opposed. The exact same bill that failed the legislative delegation meeting on December 8th of 2021 is before you again today. It was previously submitted with a flawed feasibility study and has been resubmitted with the same study. The EDR letter of December 14th, 2022, clearly states that many of the concerns or deficiencies previously identified have not been addressed and still apply. The feasibility study submitted projects revenue at just over 17 million. In comparison, Indian Trail is operating on a current fiscal year budget of $19,834,000. There's a $2 million shortfall, and it would be irresponsible and dangerous to assume a full-service municipality could provide the services required on less money than what it takes for the limited scope of operations provided by ITID. The evaluation still shows major flaws with elements eight, nine, and 11. Please vote no. Thank you for your time and for your service.
Thank you for keeping within the time. Next up is Linda Walker, followed by P. Skoran, I think it says.
Good afternoon. I had this down to two minutes, so I'm really going to cut it now.
Good afternoon. I had this down to two minutes, so I'm really going to cut it now. I, too, wanted to point out that Indian Trail has increased their budget by $7 million this year, but the feasibility study that adopted their budget last year is still the same. So, it does already have a shortfall. This, the entities that are pushing incorporation must know 100% that it's going to work. This isn't something that we just try and see if it works. Last year, in, sorry, in 2021, Senator Powell gave very specific advice at the delegation meeting. When the same bill in the study was presented, it appears that advice fell on deaf ears. I would also like to point out that our properties are over an acre, and we would lose, any new resident would lose better rights for more than half an acre. That's not a good selling point for us homeowners when we try to escape the urbanization that's going to happen with incorporation.
Thank you. S. Coran? I'm sorry, P. Skoran, followed by Kent Nelson. If you could all line up behind, so we're ready to go. Diana Demarest.
Hi. Is this somewhat interactive?
No.
Okay. Okay. I am in favor of incorporating, of voting for or against incorporation. I don't know whether I'm for or against it, but I'm in favor of allowing our community to have an opportunity to vote. I believe a feasibility study was done, and part of the process was that you folks reviewed that, and I do not believe that there was anything major that you found in that study that would keep you from going to the next step. That is my understanding. I also, my, it is also my understanding that the feasibility study did not identify any inordinate large increase in taxes that would be a hardship for the community. I believe it's anticipated that any monies that we were sending to the county, some of that would be coming to Indian Trails. So, as far as shortfalls, I believe that was covered. Are there any, so I don't know the answer to this, but I'd like to know, are there any steps or criteria that have not been met in your review that you found that it shouldn't go to the next step? As a group, this, as a group, this entity has generally claimed to be for self-determination and home rule. Please live up to that promise.
Thank you.
Please ensure that there's sufficient publication of any vote that does occur, because it should be done in the sunshine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We are going to vote today.
I know you're going to vote, but I'm talking about the actual vote. Please make sure it's public.
Kent Nelson.
Very poor job of publicizing your meetings. Thank you.
Kent Nelson filed by Diana Demarest, if you could line up, and Grissel Ramos.
Honorable senators and representatives, we do appreciate you. Thank you very much for being here today. My name is Kent Nelson. I moved to the acreage about two years ago after 20 years in Broward County, but I'm originally from North Dakota. I worked in fields and farms as a kid growing up, got a master's degree in agriculture, promoted U.S. agriculture overseas for 15 years across three continents. My great-great-grandfather homesteaded mine out in North Dakota. He was one of four people there. He dug a hole in the ground, lived in a sod hut. In a nutshell, agriculture's in my DNA. I moved to the acreage because of that, but I'm concerned about the gentrification that's happening around it. I don't want to see the loss, the last vestige of agriculture in Palm Beach County, and ask you today to consider the opportunity, the right to vote, to determine whether or not the people that live there have the autonomy to determine whether or not it will retain that rural and maintain that community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Diana's not here. Ms. Ramos, and followed by Jay Sweet and Dennis Hawkins.
Thank you for your time. I am a citizen. My name is Grissel Ramos, and I'm a citizen of Loxahatchee. I've been a citizen for 17 years, and much like the previous comment, I moved there specifically for the agricultural and the lifestyle, which has been rapidly infringed upon by developers over the last few years. Regardless of which side of this issue you fall on, I believe that as a citizen of this great country, that we should have the right to vote on it. So, it doesn't much matter whether you're for or against, for the purpose that we are here right now. We are here for the purpose of voting, and we deserve the right to have a voice in the future of our community. And I would hope that you would take that into consideration. Instead of so much the issues of pro and against, we just want the right to vote as citizens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Jay Sweet, followed by Dennis Hawkins, followed by Karen. I can't read that last one.
Good afternoon, Jay Sweet. Thank you for your consideration. This is an opportunity for us to have some self-determination of what we want to do. Am I for, am I against it? I don't know, but what I do know is that the vigorous debate that needs to happen to determine whether I should be for or against it won't happen unless it's scheduled for a vote. No one's going to invest the time, effort, and money to vet out all the issues unless we have the vote. The opportunity for the vote will vet those issues out. It'll give us the opportunity for some, to determine our own path. The other thing it's going to do, it'll put the issue to bed. It will decide yea or nay. That's what it's all about. I am a big believer to keep as much government local to where you can have the easiest say. Incorporation gives us that, and the bill as proposed, if it were to pass, provides an opportunity to vote for all the commissioners. Please give us the opportunity to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Hawkins?
Thank you. I'm Dennis Hawkins. I'm a lifetime resident of Palm Beach County and a 30-year resident of the acreage. I downloaded the packet, incorporation packet, from your website, and I'm assuming it's accurate. I looked at it, and the first thing I see right off the bat is that if you pass it today, there will be a referendum on the, on the incorporation, but it's going to take place last year. The dates are the same exact dates they were last year, or the last time you were, you did it. At least, that's what was on the, the packet that you posted on your website. In the, another thing is the, the name of the, the city. We already had a informal vote when I was a member of the committee to incorporate, and the people of the acreage voted and they selected the name Acreage Pines as the name of the city. Then it was unceremoniously changed in opposition to what the people wanted. It was changed to the Village of Loxahatchee, and we already have a city called Loxahatchee. It's, already exists, and now we're going to have two of them if this thing passes. Probably some lawyer said, well, if it's just a letter off, you can do it, but, you know, sometimes just because something's legal doesn't make it right to have two cities with the same name.
I'm sorry, we're running out of time. Are you for or against this local bill?
I'm against this local bill. Eventually, we might be able to do this if we can do it correctly, but this is not right.
Thank you. Are you Karen? I can't really read this. Okay, Karen, come on up, followed by Suzanne Parenteau, I think it says, something.
Good afternoon. In short, I'll be as brief in a minute as I can. We went from three to two, one minute. I'm opposed. I've looked at this application. It's essentially the same one that you rejected last year. It doesn't address some very open issues that affect landowners, including the roads, including the homestead issue. It talks about wishful thinking, but it doesn't specify these. Also, I believe this is more of an ITID, district-driven. They had paid for substantial amount of money for a mobility study several years ago, and I saw that mobility study. It was fantastic for municipalities, but they are not a municipality. We were not then, yet they are driving this push. The people working on it are three of the five board members with maybe two citizens who do this social media marketing. It really isn't, it could be disastrous in short for us as residents, as landowners, and also our surrounding municipalities. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Can I get the name? I didn't get the name.
Oh, can you repeat your name? Sorry. Mank? Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Suzanne Parenteau. I've been a resident in Palm Beach County for 42 years. I, too, am from an agricultural area, and I moved to the acreage 30 years ago, and I have loved it more than you can say. Raised my children there. I also had my business there as well and employed many employees. And I'm concerned about our future out there with what's been going on around us. It looks like so much more is going to change, and I'd like to be able to have the right as a citizen to be able to vote yes or no. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Baxter, do you wish to speak on this bill or was it the other bill?
If allowed, I will say something.
I'll come up, please.
As I'm always in favor of people being able to vote yes or no on something, most of their, most of their issues that I think they have came from my predecessor, and I've already started to address them at the county level. And so, I do want them to be able to vote, but I would want, it's just some time to prove to them we do not need an increase in taxes to give them their wishes. I have looked at the feasibility study, and their will, whether it's significant or drastic, depending on who you are, you see those increases differently. I just wanted time to be able to address this, but if you choose today to allow them to vote, I wouldn't be upset at that either.
Can you just state your name, please?
Commissioner Sarah Baxter.
Thank you very much. That is the end of our public comment. Okay, are there members?
There's no other people to fill out a comment card.
I went through them. This is for this bill.
For this bill.
Maybe they filled it out for the wrong bill.
If we go. Okay, we are in debate. Rep. Casello, do you wish to debate?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate, we're going to be voting on this bill. My emails have been blown up for the last two months, so thank you all. I'm a little surprised about the opposition here today. It doesn't seem to be strong opposition. I'm all for having the people decide where and how they want to live. I think that's important. Like the gentleman said earlier, it's either a yes or a no, and we can discuss it. And the other concern I have, we keep talking about the flawed feasibility study. Why wasn't another one done? We had a whole year to go over and do it again. It was never done. We're using the same one. That's just the question I have, is probably can't be answered, but I'm going to be up on this bill today. I think the people deserve at least the opportunity to vote yes or no.
I went a little out of, I went a little out of order, so I need a, someone to move to make a motion to approve this local bill.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Representative Casello, Representative Caruso, seconds that we can just go ahead and vote on this local bill. Any further debate?
Madam Chair, I have a point of privilege to ask a couple of questions.
Yes.
I don't know, Representative Roth, if you can answer these questions, but is there any merit to the gentleman's statement about the name change? Was there a name prior to this name that's here?
There's people in the audience that might be able to, but the one thing he said that was incorrect, the other city is not Loxahatchee, it's Loxahatchee grows.
Thank you. That's a great clarity.
So, there is, so changing it to the, naming it the Village of Loxahatchee, I think is acceptable.
This is a follow-up question, Representative Roth. I wasn't here last year when this local bill was presented. Do you know how many community meetings were led or how many community meetings were had that residents came and heard this plan?
I participated probably in about a half a dozen meetings. There was a couple of committees formed, one to form a charter. We talked about, you know, the budget. We had the sheriff there, someone from the sheriff's office there to talk about the changes in the cost. If you, you're now going to be contracting with the sheriff versus being on, so there was a large number of ones in preparation for filing the bill this year, and they continue to have meetings. It's under the name Vote Lox, where they're giving people the opportunity to discuss this local bill and why you should have a choice.
Thank you, Representative.
Anything else? Any debate or, okay. Senator Powell?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to just say, Representative Roth, thanks for the opportunity to discuss this earlier. And to the citizens who came up and spoke today, we've heard you. I will say that we've had an opportunity to look at this, and many of the comments that you've made, we've understood. I do believe that this is an opportunity for you all who live in this community to become actively involved in a process. What will happen here today is if there's a vote in favor of this, it will be to allow for the community who is impacted to have a referendum and look at this. Yes, I know there are some issues that you all have brought up, but I also know that there's people who've come up and spoke to the idea or the fact that they would like for their community to have the opportunity to vote on this. I will be in favor of this today, so with that being said, it's in the hands of the community to make a decision as to if you want to incorporate or if not. On my vote, I can't speak for the rest of the delegation.
Representative Caruso?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that last year, Representative Roth and I as chair of this delegation worked, worked days and hours each day on, on making sure that this bill was constitutionally correct and took into consideration. I think what we've done here today is brought forth a bill that is a good bill, and it allows, you know, I'm for the self-determination of, through this referendum, to let the individuals of this community decide on their own. And, and taking that, voting here today is not the last step. This just gets it up, bumps it up to Tallahassee.
Thank you.
Still got to go through committees. It's still got to go to the House floor. It's got to go to the Senate floor and, and pass both, both houses, and the governor's got to sign it. So, there are, is a lot of opportunity still for here to, to change the bill, to amend the bill, and to, and to make sure that it's exactly dialed in. The individual that mentioned the date was wrong for the referendum, what I'm reading is November 7th, 2023, so it's not a year ago. And, and so, I'm in favor of the bill. I hope everybody else is.
Thank you. Vice Chair Harrell?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I, too, wanted to correct the date. I specifically looked it up, and it is November 7th, 2023. There is a year for citizens to have conversations, continue to have the conversations, and it is a delight to hear how many there have previously been. This, this bill allows only for the voting of the public who are in the district. It does not in any way impact whether you're going to incorporate or not. It gives you the opportunity to do so should the majority of the voters do that, and I have always been in favor of allowing the voters to make the choice. So, I will be voting for this bill today.
Anyone else for debate? Anything else? Representative Roth, or you're good?
I'm good.
Excellent. We'll have to hear that. Having no additional public comment or debate, the question is on adoption of the motion. The Executive Director will call the roll.
Senator Berman.
Yes.
Senator Harrell.
Yes.
Senator Polsky.
Yes.
Senator Powell.
Yes.
Representative Caruso.
Yes.
Representative Casello.
Yes.
Representative Edmonds.
Yes.
Representative Gossett Seidman.
Yes.
Representative Roth.
Yes.
Representative Skidmore.
Yes.
Representative Snyder.
Yes.
Representative Waldron.
Yes.
Madam Chair, by unanimous vote of the House and Senate members present, this bill has been adopted.
Having received votes in favor by a majority of the House members present and a majority of the Senate members present, the motion is adopted. The last bit here is the Indian Trails Improvement District. Representative Roth, I believe you have something to say on this.
Yes, I do, ma'am. I want to make a comment. Thank you to the members for their unanimous vote on this bill. I'm looking forward to working with everybody in Tallahassee to help me get this through committee. I know everybody is with us on this, giving everybody the opportunity to vote. Having said that, I'm going to withdraw the Indian Trails Improvement District bill.
Thank you very much. Any further? Any further comment from the members on any of the local bills? Okay, one last announcement I'd like to make. This is our last public meeting of the delegation for 2023, but members, we are having a workshop with the county commission on January 30th, 10 to 12, at Palm Beach State College Public Safety Building. I'm sure Vicki will send us lots of emails and also a little reprimand on what happened at lunch today for those of you who took sandwiches who didn't sign up. Shame on you. And with that, Representative Caruso moves we adjourn for the day.